Ladies and gentlemen, uh, welcome to the June 7th meeting of the Gastonia City Council. Thank you for being here. I think that one of the things we're seeing on the, on the, uh, way coming in is what I've seen all my life, is when all those trucks are coming down one, one side of Franklin going, they, uh, I'm sure they're being told to go that way from I-85. There's a semi tractor trailer at, at the, at the bridge at Mecklenburg County, north brown, bound on the Gaston County side that turned over with bees.
No, really.
And they got a beekeeper over there, so.
Northbound?
Yeah.
Are the bees going southbound?
Uh, I don't know, but they, they had asked, they'd asked for the City of Anger to come over there and help. Now, we told them.
Is there a honey pot there?
Bellmont's here.
Yeah, that would be Bellmont, wouldn't it? But it is, uh, they said it'd be tied up for a while, but it's, they were for a while there going through, so. Um, I'd like too, at this time, ask that, uh, you, uh, pray with me. I, I'd like to first say, and then afterward have, we'll stand and have the pledge of allegiance, uh, to the flag, but, um, I'd like for us to remember, uh, certainly in our prayers and our thoughts, um, Mike Huffman and, and Ray Miller, that's hard to say, Mike Huffman and Ray Miller, uh, Electrical Service lineman, uh, you probably know about it and read about it, but it's, uh, Mike was in, in, had second and third degree burns, uh, over, it was a freak accident over at the tech park in, uh, near Gaston College, and that was Saturday morning. Uh, I understand that Ray was, got to go home a little later on in the day, but they took Mister, took, uh, Mike to, um, uh, the burn center at Wake Forest, and so, uh, but he's, I understand he's home now, and, uh, so we want to be, and he's just put his nut, his favors in to retire after thirty years or so of the City of Gastonia, so, uh, certainly let's all think of, of him and, and both of them and their families. Uh, let's pray, please. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the opportunity to be together, and we thank you for the opportunity to help the City of Gastonia. We also ask that you be with those that are sick and grieved and worried, and help us all to just see that bright light at the end of the tunnel. In your name we pray. Y'all mean, let's stand, please.
I pledge allegiance to the Father of the United States of America and to the Republic for which he stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I also would add, Chief Welch, certainly, I know how your department feels about what happened yesterday, and about Captain Long, twenty-eight years old, baby on the way, three-year-old, and it's a sad situation, and very sort of similar to the, the Fandwell situation in a lot of ways, so certainly we, we, uh, thinking about that family. Okay, uh, item C is the adoption of the, uh, agenda. Uh, is there a motion?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, raise your hand, please.
Yes.
Say okay. Item D is approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting of March 1, but you have a copy of it. Is there, uh, a motion to approve?
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Okay, uh, item E, award ceremonies. That's unusual. Okay. All right, presentations, uh, under item Elf is the, uh, is the forest supervisor, Laura Shidale?
Shidale.
Shidale. I, Shidale, I, that'd be close, Shidale. I know a lot of Shidales. Uh, Laura Shidale, Forest Supervisor with the North Carolina Forest, Forest Service, Mountain Island, um, Donald Carmichael Conservancy Area. Uh, Laura, thank you for being here.
Yes, sir. Thank you for having me, um, and I won't take too much of your time tonight. Um, I've been working on this particular project for about seventeen years. I've been with the North Carolina Forest Service for twenty years. Um, y'all know the portion of the property, uh, hopefully as the Donnie Carmichael Conservancy Area. Um, it is a portion of the Mountain Island Educational State Forest. We've been working on the Educational State Forest since nineteen ninety-eight. The North Carolina Forest Service manages seven educational state forests across the state. All of the educational state forests are open to the public, for the exception of the Mountain Island Educational State Forest. Um, are, are y'all familiar with the Educational State Forest and, and where it's located? Um, out of, uh, Keenan Road, where, you know, logistically about thirteen miles north of Charlotte, right up NC-16. Um, there's approximately two thousand acres that are encompassed in the forest. Uh, the City of Gastonia owns a portion of the property. The Gaston County and Lincoln County own the other two portions of the property. All of the properties are leased by the North Carolina Forest Service on a long-term seventy-five-year lease. Um, all of the properties have conservation easements on them. Um, the Educational State Forest is written into the conservation easements, so that hopefully that is what that property will be used for in the future. One of the things that we have been trying to do, and you, you see the bulleted points that I have here, um, hopefully in your notes, I may not hit all of those, but, um, the highlights of it are, what, what we have done is we are revitalizing efforts to try to run a private campaign to, um, fund the education center that we have been unable to get funds for to put on the forest. Um, the forest isn't open to the public because we don't have facilities. Now, just because we're not open to the public doesn't mean we're not doing things. You'll see one of those bullets is since two thousand and eleven, the forest has had over thirteen thousand students attend five hundred and nineteen ranger-led classes, and we have hosted over thirty-four thousand visitors, but we do that by appointment. We're just not open on a general public basis because we don't have those facilities. The only facility that we have is a forty-by-sixty metal building, and it, it's our shop, but, you know, we can move our stuff out and clean it up and put up tables and chairs, and that's where we do our classes, uh, with the kids. They can come in, you know, and eat in, in the shade, and we can, uh, we have heat in there if it happens to be cool. Uh, most of our classes are, of course, we like to conduct outside, but sometimes you have to bring them in for, for certain things, um, and, and we use the shop area for that. Um, in trying to get the private funds for this, what has happened is, um, the Mountain Island Educational State Forest and the North Carolina Forest Service, under the umbrella of the North Carolina Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services, are being joined by the North Carolina Association of Soil and Water Conservation Districts and the North Carolina Foundation for Soil and Water Conservation, as well as Carolina Land and Lakes Resource Conservation and Development Council, to revitalize a private funding campaign for the education center at Mountain Island. And what I am just asking of the council tonight, and I'll also be going to, um, the Board of Commissioners in Lincoln and Gaston County also for the same thing, is just to, um, ask y'all's permission, if, if y'all are still good with us, um, saying, you know, the City of Gastonia is on board with this project and that you guys know about it, and, um, through a letter of support, would you show your support for that committee? And we would also like to ask permission to use the City of Gastonia's logo on any letters that we may send out to potential private donors, uh, on, on behalf of the committee that's been formed.
Okay, uh, any questions of Laura? Yes, sir.
Uh, Laura, where does your main funding come from for the, the area, for, for your area? Is it solely state or is it combination state-federal?
Our, with the Educational State Forest, all of our funds are state-appropriated. Um, now, now we have county, you know, like we have county rangers and assistant county rangers in each county in the state of North Carolina, and they share between the county and the state, you know, those employees and, uh, um, and their funds. Our program is separate from that, so all of our funds are state.
The one facility you have is you rely on state money for upkeep?
Yes, sir. Yes. All, all of our money's are state, state funds.
What about the, when you, uh, hold the instruction classes and the teaching, who, who kicks in? Is, is that just volunteers, or is it voluntary, or how, how does that, how does that work?
No, sir. Most of the classes I do. Um, I also have one educational ranger who works with me, and he pitches in. Sometimes we pull in resource personnel from our district. Um, we're District Twelve here, which encompasses about nine counties, so I can pull other Forest Service employees in to help us with larger groups if we need it.
Okay, um, let's start with Ms. Gillis, Dr. Gerling.
Uh, just a, uh, one question. What is the, um, participation rate of Gaston County, maybe schools or other people that may be, um, coming to your facility? Is there any way to track that?
Um, we track it by, you know, the schools that come to, to the Educational State Forest. Um, we, I, if you were gonna put a percentage on it between the three entities that own property, but see, we have kids that come from, um, Davidson County, um, Ardell, we have kids that come from Mecklenburg also. Um, it just happens to be, you know, the main ones that I deal with are, are the property owners. Um, and since the City of Gastonia owns the property, that's why, so with Gaston County, I would say probably about forty-five percent of the kids that come to the forest are, are, are from or associated with groups that are in Gaston County.
Thank you.
The, um, the citizens of North Carolina just passed a very large bond referendum. Uh, was a project of this magnitude introduced as, as a potential, um, item on that bond referendum? I mean, did you all put your name in the hat for monies? Because a lot of money went to a lot of places, and I'm wondering why, you know, a little bit of money didn't go towards this.
I'm gonna be wondering the same thing. Um, we, um, the North Carolina Forest Service is a, a large organization that has a lot of moving parts, and, um, education is one of those moving parts. It is very important, but there are other things that are, are higher on the totem pole that have to be taken care of first, so I really can't speak to what was mentioned or was not mentioned in that particular bond. Um, I have not heard.
Did the Forest Service get any money from that bond referendum?
I, I really couldn't speak to it because I'm, I'm, that's a little above my level. That's exactly right.
But, um, well, like I say, I mean, goodness gracious, uh, I'm totally supportive of this effort, because I think anytime you can educate kids and get them outside, it's wonderful, and you really need something like this in order to, again, um, support your efforts. So I think that's great, but also see how much money we were gonna pony up for all these different things around the state, uh, over two billion dollars, I guess, right?
Mm-hmm.
And, again, now you're having to struggle to go to private citizenry to try and raise these funds, and it just seems like this should be something that should be funded by the state, not, not have to go to corporate and other donors, so I just agree.
Yeah, it's a fair point.
Mr. Gallagher?
Um, yes, ma'am. Do, do you have a picture of this, so the people out there can see it, um, that you could put on that OMO on it?
I do actually have a picture of, um, the, the legislative brief that I have.
Exhibit F-13.
They may be able to see it through that, I'm not sure.
I got it. This is actually, um, a legislative brief that was used in the past, but, um, it has a really good picture and a layout of the education center. And in this particular document, this is a, like I say, this is an older document. Um, it is called a Welcome Center. Since then, we have changed it to, to calling that what it is, is the Education Center. But this is what the, the building would look like. It is very similar to layouts of some of the s, the newer state parks, if folks have been to, to the state parks buildings. What we tried to do is we tried to use a footprint that was already created. Um, we just kind of took the grandiose part out of it, um, for, you know, expense purposes. So it's a very simple building, um, but it would be a very useful building.
So for that building, is that the total cost four million dollars, or is that four million dollars for that building and all the trails and everything you have?
I think the cost for that particular is, is it two million, six hundred that's listed on there? The, the total cost is four million for, and that is everything, turnkey, infrastructure, um, equipment is built into that four million, also, uh, trails. So the four million would be everything, open the gate and let the people come in.
Okay. So you're looking for just us to say that we're on board, we'd like you to do something like that, um, and also, um, to use our logo for, letterhead for when you go out to, um, make, um, petitions to the public to ask for the funds, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And, um, you know, I, I'd like to see it get done, but, you know, like the doctor said here, um, basically, they just had that big, can you write grants at all? Are you able to write for grants within the state, within the federal government as well?
Yes, sir. We can write grants, but the biggest thing about grants is they, most grants do not do brick and mortar. Most grants don't do capital, capital funding, and that is our problem. You know, what we need is that building.
Now, are you a five oh three C?
Well, we're the state of North Carolina, though.
Yeah.
And, and see, that's a problem that we run into, to be quite honest with you, because I have done many, I've looked at many grants, um, and that, that one five oh one C-three thing, because it doesn't actually say that the state of North Carolina is, and we don't have the paperwork, and we don't have the number, but we're the state of North Carolina, that's what, you know, I get told. Um, we do, because we are a conservation-minded, um, o-organization, we are not preservation-minded, um, we do harvest timber. All of our timber harvest receipts go to the Community Foundation of Gaston County, um, in the Mountain Island Educational State Forest Fund. So there is a, there is a way that we can, you know, manipulate that a little bit, but, um, it isn't the community foundation's job to basically be our bank, you know, they're just, they're holding the money through resolutions. There's a resolution, um, the city council did a resolution, the Gaston County and the Lincoln County Commissioners and the state of North Carolina, that all of those timber sale receipts would go to the Gaston County Community Foundation, instead of, you know, everybody wondering where that money's gonna go, because it was cut off this property or that property. We wanted to make sure that the money went back to the forest and not somewhere else. So we do have that connection with A-five oh one C-three, but most grants also, um, don't want to do third party. And see, that brings somebody else into the loop. So it's been a, um, it's, it's been a, a series of hurdles, um, uh, to be honest with you, and it's, uh, we just keep trying, uh, different things, and this was one of the things that, that this, this, this group that got together, the Mountain Island Educational State Forest Coordinating Committee, um, they wanted to get together and give a shot at, at doing the private funds, because the Commissioner of Agriculture basically turned us loose and said, "If you can get the private funds to put the facility there, we'll make sure that we, we fund the positions and everything else that needs to go with them."
So do the other educational state forests have brick and mortar centers like this?
They already have those. Most of them were built in the nineteen seventies by the Civilian Conservation Corps.
Where did those funds come from?
Well, that's, it's, a lot of, a lot of, a lot of it was done by hand, uh, through Civilian Conservation Corps efforts, uh, CCC, you know, back in the old days. Um, it was, and, and back then, because we're the Forest Service and, um, I mean, we're pretty versatile with things that we can do, for the people who work in the Forest Service, we have a lot of different talents, um, and we used to be able to, to use those to do a lot of things, um, but, uh, with the way things are now, there are a lot of things that we used to do that we can't do today.
Building codes.
You know, we have buildings that, that we have built ourselves, but that, that doesn't happen much anymore.
So no more log cabins?
Mm, no.
I got one more. Yes, sir. I, uh, I, I have no problem supporting this, and I think we should go ahead and, and do that. Uh, my last question is, when people come to visit, or when they enter the Welcome Center, will there be any recognition of the City of Gastonia's efforts to, to help in this promotion?
Whatever you want. No, we, we have been, we have been, uh, we've been told that, uh, with the private donors, I mean, I mean, they're, we've talked to different entities, of course, Duke, you know, Pepsi, um, and, and they have been told that if, you know, if they wanted their name on a classroom, or their name on a picnic shelter, or if you wanted a plaque or something like that, or, you know, whatever you may come up with that would, would fit into the realm of what we do. Now, it, it has to be, we, we've told everybody, you know, it has to kind of fit into our, our mission. Um, but, but yes, there would be that possibility. Yep.
And you're not asking for money, you're just asking for support, the ability to use our, basically our name, saying that we support your efforts?
That's correct. And we wanted you to know too, because, you know, we, if we go to folks and start talking about this revitalization of, of trying to privately fund this education center, and you, y'all know a lot of people, and these people get a letter, and then they come to you, and then you didn't know anything about it. So we wanted to make sure everybody knew what we were doing. So that's basically what this is.
Mr. Gallagher and Mr. Munn.
Um, I was gonna make a motion to accept the, uh, for us to allow them to use our logo and also, um, anything else, a letter of resolution, um, to help them get kick-started and to build this building.
I'll second that.
Is there discussion?
Um, Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, for those members that worked on the council back then, this is named after Don Carmichael, who was our, our city engineer and assistant city manager. And, uh, if, all this land was donated by the City of Gastonia, it's actually in the city of Mount Holly, and, uh, this is part of a collaboration, as you can see, the state government and county and, and the city over a number of years. So we've always supported this idea, and, uh, we want to work closely with them. The Shield Museum does as well, and so it's just a real wonderful opportunity that's out there, and I'm su, I'm sure that sooner or later we'll, we'll get that building.
Thank you.
So, so just recently, there's been a, you know, a, uh, image campaign called Go Gaston Outside, and I can't help but think that this perfectly dovetails with that. And so I would encourage you to be in touch with Mr. Munn, and Mr. Munn can give you contacts with the Gaston County Image Committee, uh, as well as the other leaders of the business community that are supporting all this. And I, I would think this would be, again, part of a big-picture thing. When, when we look at Crowder's Mountain, we look at the Whitewater Center, we look at Stowe Botanical Garden and Shield Museum and all the other, you know, natural resources that we have, this needs to be right up there with us.
Thank you very much. I think so also.
As, as the city manager said, we probably, most all of us know that the, that, that was for Don Carmichael, and, uh, who's passed away, and, and also our, the beginning of our good drinking water up there in, uh, Mountain Island Lake, the City of Gastonia, and other cities. Uh, any other questions, Mr. Gallagher? There is a motion and a second. All in favor? It is unanimous.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much, Laura. Thank you for what you do. Presentation, Ms. Candace Hyde, uh, Gaston County YMCA Aquatics Director, request for, uh, in, in-kind services, Grizzlies Five K Run on Highland Greenway.
We've allowed Candace Hyde to, uh, to, uh, go on, we let her go to a vacation. Um, my name's Steve Deaver. I'm the District Executive Director at the Gaston County Family YMCA. First, I want to take this moment to thank all of those that came out and supported our groundbreaking at Robinwood Lake on May twenty-fifth. We do appreciate it and look forward to the continued, uh, opportunities there. Um, I'd like to introduce Sharon Stevens, our Member Engagement Director, and the, uh, Race Director for the Fourth Annual Gastonia Grizzlies Five K.
Hi, thank you for having us. We are requesting traffic control on Marietta. That is the purpose of this meeting.
For the race?
For the race, for the Grizzlies Five K. That's on July twenty-second at six P.M.
You're talking about North Marietta?
Yeah, it's actually just a crossing at the high, at the Highland Greenway, so it's actually not closing the roads.
That's Martin Luther King.
It is at this point. Thank you. It has changed.
We think, we think Marietta, we think south.
Were you running, did you?
Yeah. Okay. Well, that's, that's great. Questions of, of Sharon or Steve, either one? That was wonderful, what you said about the, that's, that's the most beautiful view, and I believe, um, some of us just looked at it our lives, but that's the view of, of Robinwood Lake. That's, that's gonna really be something else. Congratulations. Uh, any questions? Do you, we, is, I'm sure over in the, um, in the exhibits that it's got the figures and so on, is, is any questions? If anyone, go ahead.
I have one question. You have down here, um, Five K Walk/Run. Do the, the walkers have to go to Five K?
We do have a, um, we have a kids' walk that's on the field, but then we do allow folks, um, with a limit of one hour, um, to walk the Five K Race as well, and we've had, um, folks do that as well from our company challenge.
So it starts right over here at Marietta and goes up, right up to Grizzlies?
Do you want to explain the course?
It starts actually at home plate. You go in, um, on the outside outfield, and then the greenway, and then come back and, uh, slide into home plate if you so desire.
So it goes up and down the greenway, all the way on the, the North Highland Greenway?
Nice. Okay. Good job. Thanks.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the request.
Second. There has been a motion made. Second, discussion, questions? All in favor of the motion, please. Thank you, and it is unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you both very much. Thank you, sir. She says she said what she wants. Uh, we have one silent sheet, uh, public expression, uh, right here, Mr. Don Burke on Witsen Road. I remember that one.
Don Burke, thirty-one oh one, Witsen Road. I'd just like to share a little bit of information with you. One of the positive things about the city, I've always thought, is your sunshine list. So I looked at it last night and scanned the agenda, and I thought I would comment on this last item of in-kind service. I think they're wise to request inside service, or in-kind service, I'm sorry, based on the circumstances. And I think it was good for the council to give that in-kind service based on the circumstances. Now, let's look at the circumstances just a moment. The City of Gastonia Engineering Department and Planning Department has engineered and built a greenway that requires in-kind service to use. I'm sorry, I'm not, uh, too proud of them on that point, whether you like greenways or not. While, uh, scanning the, uh, minutes, I see where the committee is thinking about, uh, tech, another tech park up on the Cherrville Highway. Nothing's committed, just planning. Now, I would request any written information that Mr. Munn or staff has from the county. Now, the reason I say that, if you're wanting to get into the real estate business, you should know it. The best way to learn is from somebody else. I'm not saying I'm against economic development, I'm just saying that there was some money spent by the county that they could have done it maybe a little different and been more successful, so learn from their mistakes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Have a good meeting. I'm going home.
Thank you, sir. Once you got to eat, we'll go in.
I'm already ate.
Thank you, sir. Okay, the consent agenda, um, out of one, two, three, four, five, six, and seven, under consent agenda, is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, or any questions? All in favor of that motion? So, yeah, I mean, raise your hand, please. And it is unanimous. Thank you. Okay. Item number eight is the, uh, under the regu, regular agenda, is the adoption of this year, uh, twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen annual, I'm sure that's budget. Uh, and of course, you see on the next page, and I won't go over those, you have, I'm sure we have, uh, the number one through eight as far as the ro, budget, budget and resolutions. Mr. Munn?
Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, this is the culmination of our efforts this year to put together a budget, and it's more than two hundred million dollars. Uh, it constantly changes, even though we adopt it now, uh, it will move throughout the year. Uh, we will have opportunities to spend some money to invest in our city, and we'll also have opportunities that, uh, revenues will come to us in advance, and sometimes they'll recede. But this is our, our budget plan going forward. There are eight different items here, this is similar to what we have each year. Over the years, uh, sometimes we've voted on them individually, and sometimes we've put them all together. I would suggest that if, if council wishes, you could just, one vote can do all of them unless there's a reason that you would want to pull one out and, and, and have any further discussion. But basically, the first item is the budget ordinance for twenty sixteen, seventeen. It is, uh, the ordinance, and this is the way we do it in Gastonia, is the way all cities and counties have to do it in, in North Carolina, is you reduce the budget to an ordinance. And then this is what is actually the legal document. We have all those pages, and all of those go into the individual line items, and each of the departments will have their line items, but the actual passage of the budget is, is a budget ordinance. And they're in general categories, it allows us to, during the year, that things can move around to be able to deal with the complexities of the various businesses that the city's involved in. The second item is the resolution adopting the proposed electric rates for fiscal year twenty sixteen, seventeen. There's no overall increase, uh, in electric rates this year at all, we don't think there will be for the next, till twenty twenty or twenty twenty-one. They, the, our wholesale rate seems to be flat, uh, so we're quite in a good position compared to several years ago, where we were looking at increases that might come to us, you know, at, at a five percent clip, one after another. Uh, we, as we have discussed, we have, we are simplifying our system, and we have, uh, more than twenty different rate classifications. Uh, we're trying to modernize it, and how those rate classifications reflect what industry standards are, and what do, and the co-ops and everyone else do as far as their classifications of businesses. Uh, the next water and sewer rates, as we discussed in January, they'll go up two percent, they have not gone up in four years. There is no, uh, tax increase, there is no increase in, in solid, in, in stormwater. The next item, which is four, does deal with solid waste, that is, that increase from four dollars a month to six dollars and fifty cents. Uh, resolution, the, uh, proposed tag fee for fiscal year twenty sixteen, seventeen, that would be set at thirty dollars. The project ordinance for fiscal year twenty sixteen, seventeen, for community development block grant, hundred percent grant from U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Uh, we spend general fund dollars, community development, uh, what, what, community development, uh, pays us back as we spend the money. The project ordinance for capital projects, twenty sixteen, seventeen, and finally, the changes to the proposed budget for fiscal year twenty sixteen, seventeen. These pages, which are eight, uh, twenty-seven and eight, uh, twenty-eight in your budget, reflect the changes that have, have occurred since we started, and when, since we last approved budget. So, if the council has any questions, uh, this is our direction going forward, and all during the year, we will be adjusting and moving this budget, and, uh, but the city's in strong position now financially, our big funds, water and sewer, electric in general, are right now solid, and, uh, there were some years that we couldn't, we couldn't say that.
Any questions, Mr. Humphries, Mr. Pissel?
Mr. Munn, I, I don't remember three, about the water and sewer rates going up. Does that only apply to city limits, uh, customers, or anybody that purchases water from us?
All our customers.
So, all, all of, all of our water customers?
That's correct, and, and sewer.
Um, I just wanted to mention, uh, thank you, Mr. Munn, city manager, our assistant city managers, all the department heads, staff that worked on this. Obviously, this is months and months and months of work, we've had, I don't know how many meetings on this, and this is the culmination of all that, but the bulk of the, the load is certainly carried by staff and department heads. And I want to say thank you to everybody that put in the time to bring us this budget, I think it's a good budget, I'm sure there's gonna be more discussion. But I will go ahead and make the motion that we approve the budget and the resolutions as listed, one through eight.
Second.
Motion's made, in second, discussion? Questions?
Just I know, uh, a lot of work was done on the restructuring of the, uh, electric rates, and, um, I just wondered, and I understand, I think I understand why, um, in doing so, uh, is the net effect, uh, neutral?
Neutral.
Okay, so we really haven't gained or lost in the process, but we've just sort of cleaned it up and, and made it easier to understand, and, and they can compare apples to apples with the other utilities, like Duke and folks, okay.
Ed, um, I was checking, um, back over the years, and back in two thousand twelve, our budget was a hundred ninety-three million dollars, and today, it's two hundred and fifteen million, and that's eleven percent increase. But over that time, we've never raised taxes. Our tax property value went from a figure of twenty-seven million to, right now, it's at twenty-nine million, uh, an increase of ten percent. Um, we're growing our tax base, people, and this isn't even taken into consideration, uh, the hotel, the, that's coming. It's not taking into consideration Harris Tier, it's coming, or, um, the new re- or Publix. So, um, the other nice thing is local sales tax, that increased also, it went from nine point four million, now it's at ten point three million. That's a nine percent increase. Ed, you, Melody, and the rest of the staff have done a wonderful job managing it, and, um, really, thank you, I just wanted to say, um, very impressive.
Let me follow up, piggyback on that, it, it, what you just said is exactly true, and we certainly know it doesn't take a real estate book, no, uh, know that, know these things, and several of us were at Owen's Corning today, it's the largest, I've never, it's the city in itself, it's, uh, it's, it's, it's thirteen thousand square feet of ma- of whatever that is, manufacturing, and, but it is just, it's forty-six acres. Like you said, we've got that, we've got the hotel, we've got, um, Plasma, we went to, we've got, uh, there's, uh, hope, art space, we've got, uh, we just go on and on and on around the area. There, there, there's, uh, there's others things in works, so that, we won't have to raise any taxes, but we need to stay certainly on, on top of and welcoming these people in, which we do, and which our, our staff, uh, does, certainly do, and getting a lot of, of compliments there, so. And by the way, when you read, if you haven't, I don't know how I ended up reading it, when I didn't really know what it was, um, when you see in the Gazette in the morning that the tequila's is closing, well, it is, but it's closing to remodel and come out with a whole new concept, undoubtedly not tequila's. They own the building, they say they love Gastonia, they say they love people, and they're going, I don't know what they're gonna do, but they're gonna, it may be another Jonas Brothers, I've, I've never seen anything like that in my life. Over there in town down Belmont, it's unbelievable what they're doing, but, uh, these, these guys are gonna do something, and I just thought that, that, you know, actually, the Gazette says it's closed, well, like it's doom, 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 but it's, all they're doing, they're gonna gut it, like they did Publix and Lowe's, and they're gonna build something entirely different, and that's an example of what you know. What we saw, some of us saw today was, is, is, who would have ever thought I was on Dallas Charable Highway, or White and Jenkins Road, whatever, that'd be seen, tremendous building. And I, I told Robert, I said, "Look at all those lights up there burning." And look at that water pouring through there, making whatever they're making, and, uh, so it was, uh, it's, you're right. So, okay, did we vote?
One more question.
Yes, sir.
And hopefully, this will be a short one. In any large company, like, uh, obviously, the City of Gastonia is a business, large budget, you always wonder if there's waste or fraud, uh, you know, I, I, I wouldn't suspect there would be any fraud in our case. There could be waste, do we have any mechanisms in place to detect and correct fraud and waste in, in our spending?
Uh, with regard to fraud first, uh, what, what we have every year is an independent audit firm that comes in and takes a look at all of our expenditures. They look at every fund that we have, they even look at, they look at our grants, they pull folders, they pull files, they try to check to see if they can tie it all the way back, they take a look at our employee records and everything. And so, we get, uh, that analysis that's done, and again, it's an independent company, and it's required by statute, uh, so not only Gastonia, but all cities and counties do that. So, that's one measure of, of protection there on fraud. Uh, with regard also to fraud, our finance department, we take a look at, uh, every expenditure, and, uh, we have processes that require signatures and then a check. Uh, and we come in and, and with, through the, our external auditors and our internal, uh, we'll, we'll, every once in a while, there, we don't have much cash that we hold ourselves, we collect it here. Compared to the old days, when everybody had a little petty cash account here and there, we don't have much of that, but we have gone in and will do a surprise inspection, and make sure anything, yeah. So, it, it's very, very uncommon in North Carolina that you find those things, uh, but you always have to look every year, and you always have to be on guard for that. Now, uh, waste, uh, sure, I, I, I think every time, we, we need to look at efficiencies throughout our city. You know, one of the things, when I looked at that plant today, they said it takes only twelve people to run that entire process. Now, they got a hundred and ninety people working there, doing all kinds of other things, but just to run the process, it's like twelve people. So, yeah, and there would have been hundreds, thousands, you know, back in the old days. So, we, we have to look at ways of doing things better and less expensive. We, we've moved, uh, in H.R., for instance, we were pretty drowning in paperwork, and we're, our system now is, it's called NeoGov, it, it utilizes, uh, uh, you're, you're, you're not dealing with paper, you're clicking, you're moving, and that's efficiencies, and we're saving, uh, we're, uh, there's more to be done constantly. Each year, I think, we, we, we do better. Uh, and, uh, you can't rest on your laurels, you, you, you have to have new ideas, you have to be listening to other people, you have to be going to conferences and stealing ideas from other cities to try to make things work better. I think somewhere down the road, too, we'll, to take a look at, you know, consolidating activities with the county and things like that, that's another way to actually save some, some money. And, uh, but, because, whether you're private sector or public sector, if you're going to make it going forward, uh, 'cause some things are going to cost more money, there's no way, like employees. So, you, you have got to find innovative ways to, uh, change the cost number, drive that cost number down any little place you can. So, that's all part of the management, that's part, uh, part of the challenge that we will always have, but that's an excellent question, and I think we always have to be on guard. You, you have to make sure that, that financial responsibility and the good work that Melody's office does, that, that department is, is fantastic. Uh, that keeps us straight, and, uh, and so, anyway.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, after we vote on the budget, I have a question about something after the vote.
Okay. And I, and I, I got something I want to tell y'all after that.
Uh, you're okay with it? Anything else? Any other questions?
Okay, everyone, are we ready to vote? All in favor, please, of the motion. Unopposed, unanimous, go ahead, boy.
Mr. Munn, I, I guess we're all familiar, the county's asking for a quarter cent sales tax. What's the deal on that, are they gonna ask us to vote on that in November, or, or if the state allows them to put that on the, uh, 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 election ballot, and, and is it fair? If they get a quarter percent, we don't get any? We seem like they're gonna get a quarter percent, that, that we ought to get on the ballot for us having a quarter percent, for one-fourth percent. What's the deal on that?
They've not officially talked to us about, you know, and I, what I know is what I've read, I had a little bit of a conversation with the county manager, and I, it, it is my understanding that counties, uh, like Gaston County, that did not, they have, by prior action of the state legislature, the ability to go an extra quarter cent, but it requires a vote. And that, uh, for instance, our friends in Mecklenburg are a full half cent ahead of us whenever you buy something, uh, and most people don't pay attention to the rates. Uh, but there are some counties that have a higher rate, a quarter cent or a half cent higher on their sales tax than we do. Uh, in most counties, uh, we, we're at the base level, uh, so they have the ability to go a quarter, I think it has to be designated to education, transportation. I, I heard, uh, I believe, uh, Commissioner Keger the other night say that they were, that's what they were going to do, is a quarter cent, and dedicate it to economic development and education. So, it, if they want to go any more than that, then the legislature has to give them additional authority, like they did with Mecklenburg County, and I think Wake County has that too.
Would we, could we have our own referendum on a quarter cent, or does it have to go through the county?
We don't have permission right now to do that, we did, we tried that, uh, a number of years ago, uh, it was a municipal one. Uh, most recently, it was Representative Sane from, uh, Lincoln County, about a year ago, and the General Assembly proposed a municipal permission to go, uh, to increase a quarter cent or half cent, which would go directly to municipalities, but it never got out of the House of Representatives, it was, and so it's, we don't have that authority right now. We'd have to get some special, uh, authority to do so, now, I think that's probably unlikely right now.
We've got lots of things we could do with our money, water and sewer extension, and, uh, there's so many, so many things we could use.
One, one thing's about water and sewer i- is for the longest time, a- actually, the state sales tax, whenever they increased the sales tax a number of years ago in the eighties, they, they actually had part of it dedicated, counties had to put some of the money to education, and some of the money to water and sewer, and the county government used to, uh, put money toward water and sewer systems, and that's how we expanded some of our systems in the old days, that they would match, like if the city would come up with a certain amount of money, the county would match it, and sometimes we'd get a developer in, and we would do a tri-party agreement to be able to extend it. So, the county helping to provide extensions of utilities for two rivers, uh, for Mount Holly, for Charable, for those of us that have utility systems, is, is good economic development for them. And they have done it in the past, and we could use some of that sales tax for the economic development to run a water line or sewer lines, anything like that.
Should we, should, should we pursue something like that?
Well, I think we should be at the table with them in economic development, absolutely. And, and yet, and we have, we, there have been, historically, uh, the city and county have partnered, uh, the tech park is an example, you know, where we partnered, we bought the property, actually, and we, and transferred it to the county, uh, so, sure.
The last big sewer line and so forth, I think, partnered with Ki- County and the city and Kingsmount.
And Bessemer City.
And Bessemer City, to get the one in South Gastonia.
And the federal government.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, we want to partner for our capital projects going forward, we want to partner with the state, the feds, uh, with, uh, the other municipalities, with, uh, the county, and with the private sector.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. I wanted to, to just read this, if, all of us got this, but it was just, uh, a little while ago, I think, and, uh, I think a fellow named Humphries is gonna like this. Uh, this is from, uh, REI in Charlotte, uh, congratulations, the Friends of Crowder's Mountain, Inc. has been awarded a ten thousand dollar grant from REI to allow for individuals to acquire the necessary required training, equipment, and resources to conduct monthly volunteer trail workdays in mul- in multiple heavily-used areas of the park, and alleviate the workload on the park staff. These individuals will also be able to start working on building other trails as approved by the state park system, which will create more access and lighten the footprint on existing trails. It's a privilege to partner with your organization in twenty sixteen. Working together, we hope to build greater awareness and, um, find engagement in your efforts to steward incre- and, and our increased access to the outdoor recreation places where REI members and customers play. So, well, I thought you'd like, I like that. Since we're on the subject. Hmm?
Can always use more trails up there.
More trails.
And parking.
Well, we, we, we discussed that, talk about the parking, have a little over there, so. Okay, um. Have we loaded? We did unanimously. I get lost in all this excitement about the money. Okay, um. Closing's a wonderful thing. Uh, or, or, ordinance, item nine is ordinance to amend chapter eleven of the Code of Ordinances of, of the City of Gastonia to provide for the disposal of televisions, computer equipment and to provide a process for termination of solid waste collection services. Presentation is Ms. DeeDee Gillis, Division Manager, Solid Waste. Yeah, I saw television in, in this paper.
I heard about that.
Yeah.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, how are you tonight? Um, just to take up a little bit of your time tonight, not a whole lot. Uh, this, uh, particular item on the agenda is, uh, to be able to allow solid waste staff to collect electronics. Um, when you hear electronics, you primarily think of televisions, but it also includes things like, uh, computer monitors, hard drives, the, uh, electronic wiring and batteries that go along with those particular devices. All of that is considered electronics. Uh, currently, the City of Gastonia does not have a mechanism in which to collect these items. We don't have a fee structure and the state's laws currently don't allow them to be placed into the waste stream. They have to be placed into a recycle stream. Last year in twenty fifteen, we forwarded over a hundred and eighty complaints to code enforcement because our only recourse in solid waste was to notify code enforcement when these items were sitting on the curb. So they would sit there for a while because as you know, it takes code enforcement quite a while to go through the entire enforcement procedures, up to thirty days, sometimes longer. So we wanted a way to be able to alleviate the, um, unsightliness of having these items at the curb in, in a more expeditious manner than leaving them out there for thirty days. So what we have done is, um, added this particular collection item as part of our bulky waste stream, which would be collected for a fee, the same as we collect appliances, tires and, uh, those items. And, uh, again, it would be for a fee and the fee is the same as the appliances, which is twenty-five dollars. And we would recommend that all customers, citizens, everyone in Gastonia to pay four dollars for a garb card and take it to the farmer's market. And, uh, they will in turn, um, take it to the county landfill for, um, recycling. However, if you don't have a vehicle or you don't have the means to get it past the curb, then it is a service that could be provided to our residents. The second part of this particular ordinance amendment is in order, is, is, provides for the actual strengthening of the, uh, solid waste section, uh, in regards to the utility portion due to it there being a monthly fee for service. Right now, several sections in the ordinance allow for citations for such as things like when people put things on the curb that are not collectible, like cinder block or asphalt shingles or sheet rock or maybe someone that leaves their cart at the curb all week long and never rolls it back to their house. We currently can send them a citation, but what we do is we send them the site, we, we send them a letter. We try to go out and talk to them, meet them in person. We have several different ways that we and methods that we try to contact the individuals to let them know that they are violating the ordinance, whether it's put in a card hanger, uh, sending a letter or personal contact. What this particular section does is it is written exactly like the ordinance for utilities for terminating water, sewer, electric utilities. This allows the termination of garbage services, although that is not our intent. Our intent is to use this as a last chance effort with someone who we have contacted by every means necessary. We have sent citations and they have went unpaid and they still are violating the intent and spirit of the ordinance. This would be again, last, uh, a last chance effort to try to make an impact on that particular resident to please comply with the ordinance. That is, that is the particular ordinance amendment that you have before you and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions?
When they don't. When somebody receives a citation or, or several citations and they don't pay, can you not put a, a, for that amount, put a lien on their property? Can the city do that?
The city can do that in certain circumstances. In this particular circumstance, it's, uh, much easier for the city to assess the citation and to recover it through debt set off, which is where, um, you know, when people get their, their tax refund checks.
Oh, okay.
And it actually takes it away at the, you know, whenever they submit for that refund.
Well, if, 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 if that, if they don't have, if they hadn't worked and they don't have any
That's correct.
taxable income, then, and not gonna get a refund, um, then you could put a lien on their property as a last, uh, resort?
I would defer to legal, uh, Councilman McCarthay.
If they have it, and we could go after them, yes. But as a practical matter, if you're not, you don't have a tax return, you probably don't have the property.
Probably a tenant.
Right, right.
So what about the owner of the, of property?
We, we could, but the owner is probably in business and has a tax return that we're gonna get if he doesn't pay it through the debt set off rather than going through the lien process. Cause the debt set off program just works so much faster than going through the lien process.
Sure. Thank you.
Um, thank you for coming, DeeDee.
You're welcome.
We appreciate it. Uh, back to the electronics. You said it would be the, the same, you're looking at the, the same fee as for the, uh, uh, twenty-five dollars for like, uh, citizen calls and says, I've got something that won't fit, can you come and pick this up? Whatever it is, but you're looking at the same fee?
Well, it's a little bit different. The fee you're talking about is the excess trash fee and those are the items that don't fit into the cart. And those are kind of based on weight, fifteen dollars for under a hundred pounds, twenty-five for over a hundred pounds. This particular fee is based more upon our white goods fee, which is, uh, refrigerators, washers, dryers. And that's just a flat twenty-five dollars per appliance. So it's, and no matter how much it weighs.
I think that's a bit much for a computer monitor. I, I, I mean, I have no problem with, with the, the concept and, and charging for it, but I don't, I don't know, I'm thinking maybe five dollars per item. Most of the time, people aren't gonna put a box of computers out to be picked up. It's gonna be a computer, a monitor, or it's gonna be one, two or three items that, you know, if they participate in this, you, you're not, you're not looking at a massive amount of, of stuff to be picked up. So, uh, I don't know, what, what do y'all think maybe? I'm thinking five dollars per item.
But DeeDee, this isn't necessarily based on the weight or size of the item. These items cannot go in a regular truck. So we're having to send a whole nother truck and a whole nother crew out to that address and then we're having to dispose of it, cause that just can't go in the trash either. We have to make a special run to the dump to put that in a special, I mean, it's a whole process. Five dollars, they didn't want to begin to touch what we have to do. And as DeeDee said, they can take it to the farmer's market for four dollars.
Oh, yeah, 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 absolutely.
So if you've got a little computer monitor, you can get it at the farmer's market. Yeah, I think this is more meant to catch those that just throw it on the street and leave it.
I can understand that also.
And trust me, if you live over on my side of town, you see it all the time. There's an empty lot, they'll throw everything, TV, monitor and everything else out on the empty lot. And I think twenty-five dollars is more than, more than good to charge them to say, come pick it up.
Thank you.
Just my side of that.
Yes, sure.
Let's continue this conversation a little bit more. And the reason I, I say that is because first of all, I'd like to know if, uh, if you've looked at other communities for similar rates and similar experiences or where your research went to get you to this point. Um, you know, you make good points, Todd, but on the, on the other hand, um, people aren't gonna, you know, voluntarily call up the city and, and pay that twenty-five dollars. They're gonna take that TV and they're gonna throw it on that empty lot anyway, you know? So, so that's why I want some more, I want some more background on this because I have a fear that, you know, whether, I don't care if it's five dollars, twenty-five dollars, I don't know, is it gonna work? I mean, are people really gonna call and, and pay twenty-five dollars to have that picked up? Or is, are the good people gonna do it and that's the eighty percent and then the typical twenty percent? They're just gonna throw it out, you know, illegally like they're doing it now? I mean, so where do you, where do you get this kind of this twenty-five dollar logic from?
The twenty-five dollar logic is based solely upon the appliances because we have to treat it, as Councilman Pierceall said, exactly like we do other items that don't fit, that, that are like the white goods, where they have to go into a special stream of waste or recycling, whichever that may be. And, um, primarily we see televisions. I, I can't remember the last time I saw a computer monitor or a keyboard or, or anything such as that. It's primarily the TVs. Uh, most of the newer flat screen TVs are pretty much disposable. After about four years, they, the picture goes away and they end up on the curb. We see a lot of them after Christmas. Um, numerous amounts of TVs are on the curb the weeks following Christmas. And a lot of those particular, um, locations, I think, would actually, uh, either pay or if they know there's an alternate, uh, source for them, I think they would take it. What we norm, what we do currently is if there's a TV on the curb, we actually put a door hanger on the cart or a cart hanger, depending whether the cart's been collected or not. And we notify the resident that the City of Gastonia currently doesn't collect these items and we notify them why we do not collect them. And we ask them to go to the county's website and we give them a phone number to call the county's recycling office so that they can get information on how to dispose of them properly. Now, what happens after that? If we go back out the next twenty-four to forty-eight hours and the TV's not been removed from, from the curb, that's when we go to code enforcement. And code enforcement, um, of the hundred and eighty plus, um, locations that we turned in, in twenty fifteen, that resulted in more than a hundred locations where code enforcement actually purchased a garb card, picked up the TV and drove it to the farmer's market recycling center. That was their recourse to alleviating the trash at the curb.
Well, what's, the follow-up to that is so what's the protocol gonna be if we pass this ordinance amendment?
Well, the protocol.
For, for that card hanger and what's it gonna say and, you know, how, how will the follow-up occur?
The, the only thing that's gonna change about the card hanger is we're gonna add a portion that the city can collect this for you for a fee of twenty-five dollars. If you would like us to collect it, you can call our customer service center and we'll be happy to put it on our schedule. Um, if you don't wanna collect it, you can also call and tell us you're gonna take it to, you know, an alternate location. Or you can just pick it up and take it to an alternate location because we'll be going back to check on it to make sure that it's gone. Uh, if it's still there after we have left a, a notice, then we will collect the TV and we will charge the person the twenty-five dollars.
Right, and that'll be all on the card, spell it out.
Yes, yes, sir.
Right.
It, it is.
I think it's gonna, Dave, I really think it's gonna stop people from, you know, they come by and they say code enforcement's gonna come after you. The people might just take them right to empty lots in the beginning and just toss them out. Just, you know, and this is just gonna make it a convenience for the client, for customers, for residents out there to, uh, make that call. I know my, you know, these, they may be flat screen TVs, but they're pretty heavy, let me tell you. Um, you know, it's gonna take a little bit for you, you know, you've got these fifty-five inch TVs to bring them out to the curb. Um, and you'll be welcoming twenty-five dollars to call them to have somebody come pick it up. And I think it's gonna stop, it's just giving people an opportunity to do that and it's gonna stop a lot more illegal dumping that's going on now.
I, I'm curious, I know that we were talking about the twenty-five dollars, but is that actually the cost that the city entails to do the whole process? Or is that, or is that the equivalent, or is that just taking the cost from what it would be to do the, uh, the appliance, the appliances?
This particular cost is, is actually a little more than the appliance. When, um, there was a market for recyclable items such as scrap metal and, and copper and, and those sorts of things, we were able to recycle the white goods. Um, and, and we could, um, actually, uh, we have a contract with a scrap metal, uh, company who comes in and they empty that scrap metal bin and then in turn, they send the city a, a check for the revenue that's received and, and that's then placed into the city coffers. Um, there is not such a market anymore. That, that market has went away. So this particular collection item is, um, even more costly because the white goods, um, although what makes the white goods expensive is we have to tear them down. If they have freon or, or motors or different things like that, they, they, things have to be cut out of them before they can be recycled. The televisions, there's no alternative but for us to deliver them to the landfill and in turn, we will pay the landfill the four dollars per appliance fee. Um, that will be added on to our monthly invoice. And the additional twenty-one dollars per, uh, per television or electronic would be to cover the cost of the drive to the landfill and back, which is, you know, twenty-two miles. And, um, and the fuel and wear and tear maintenance on the vehicle.
So it, it sounds like a lot of money, but in reality, we're not, this is not a, a money-making process. This is a, a service and we'll be lucky to break even if we even do that.
That's, that's our projections, yes, sir.
Thank you.
If I'm not mistaken, I think also the county ends up paying a lot more than four dollars per item when they have to, again, get the recycler to come pick those electronics up, isn't that not correct?
I'm not sure what they're paying right now. We, um, just got, we subscribe to a, um, publication that sends us out, um, different pricing for recycling. I think right now, a lot of televisions are going for somewhere around thirty cent a pound. So it again, depends upon the weight of the particular item as to what the county will pay in bulk to dispose of those items. I'm not real sure what their price is. I did contact them, of course, prior to even, um, thinking about going forward with this, uh, to get their take on it and to see, you know, how they wanted us to do the program. And, um, their only, um, comment was they, they didn't want us taking it to the landfill and filling up that bin. They would rather us take it, I mean, to the farmer's market and filling up that bin. They'd rather us take it directly to the landfill where they palletize and store all of them. So I'm not real sure what they're paying actually per appliance.
They don't want you to take it to the landfill, cause then they have to go out the landfill and pick it up and then that's an extra charge.
That's exactly right. That's exactly right.
DeeDee, it's good to see you.
You too.
Two nights in a row. You're at the Sherwood, um, uh, community watch and did a great job. I just wanna tell you that, really excellent job.
Thank you.
Um, I, I wanna get to number two, the, the enforcement procedure. Is this for non-payment?
Well, this particular section reads the same for non-payment in, in every instance for water, sewer and electric. We've never had a termination portion in the, on the garbage side, even though it's considered a utility due to the way the fee is collected, it's, it's collected as a utility. Um, so what, after talking with legal and, um, the problems that we are having with certain, um, citizens not complying with certain sections of the ordinance and, um, the big one is the cart at the curb. We needed a mechanism where we could go one extra step. And it is really a last step that in the four years I've been at Solid Waste, I have seen one case where I would actually use that. And the reason being is we don't want, you know, the old saying, throw the baby out with the bathwater. You take the garbage away, then the trash goes in the woods behind the house, right? That's not the intent of this. The intent is basically just to, to be able to have this section on the bottom of the, of the fine that we send out that says, you know, failure to pay or failure to, to comply could result in the loss of your garbage services. And hoping that'll get some additional attention.
The nuclear option kills everybody, but it has to be there.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Lieutenant. Uh, one, one other follow-up thing, um, are you gonna be able to, um, are you gonna be talking at all? I know it's not here, but you're gonna be rolling out a new cart for, uh, land, um, escaping.
For yard waste.
Yard waste.
Yes, you, you guys just passed that with the adoption of the budget, the new initiative, yes, sir.
Uh, you can buy one. Uh, you can buy one for fifty dollars and-
It's a pilot, it's a pilot.
Pilot project, that's correct.
Oh, it's a pilot project?
Yes.
Yes.
Becau- because we wanna see how it works. Some cities have used it. There, there is a problem that has some capacity issues. And so we're, we're test, we're, we're testing it, right?
Yep.
Uh, DeeDee.
Yes, sir.
Welcome.
Thank you.
I've been knowing Gay DeeDee a long time. She worked for the county for many, many years.
Don't tell my age.
My husband was a county police officer, too. But anyway, uh, what are some of the, the things that, that, that you're talking about? For instance, people leaving their, uh, garbage bin or recycling bin on the street. You pick it up, put it back down, and they never come back? They just take the garbage back up to the street and put it in, and never put it back where they're supposed to go?
That's correct.
That's what, you know. What is the fine? And if you, garbage picked up, like mine is picked up on Thursday. I have to have my can put up by midnight that night, is that correct?
That's correct.
That's correct. All right. If I don't do that, and, and say if we were really strict, what would it cost me? What's the fine?
Uh, well, what the city of Gastonia does is we go out and knock on your door. A crew chief will first, and try to get you at home. And, and explain the ordinance to you, and, and what the city requires, how early you can put it out, and how late you can leave it. If that doesn't work, then we'll leave a cart, a cart or door hanger at your property, and hope that you read it and you correct the situation. If that doesn't work, then we send you a letter that explains what's wrong and how you need to fix it.
Now, it's expensive. Another thing you could do is put it in your utility bill. And I find a lot of people don't even read the extra little papers in the utility bill explaining what you're gonna do, when the pickups are for holidays and all that. But, uh, even my neighborhood, you'd think they would put the cans up. But I see cans up all over the neighborhood, and it, uh, bothers me. Why can't people just put the can up that night? I don't understand it.
We have that problem throughout the city.
That's bad. Need to put it up. I mean, professional people, but, uh, uh, that oughta know better. Just, uh, just don't go to the trouble to go put it up, I guess. So I'm all for, uh, encouraging people to follow the law.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, just to get us back on track, I will make the motion that we approve the ordinance as presented.
I'll second this, man.
Okay, there's a motion made and seconded, any other discussion?
Beat that one.
All, all in favor of the motion, raise your hand, please. Is unanimous? Um, DeeDee, you just, you're just gonna be there a little while here.
I'm popular tonight.
Yes. Yeah, item eleven is residential, excuse me, is residential curbside and single-stream recycling negotiated contract. Allied Services LLC, uh, doing businesses, Republic Services of North Carolina, uh, doing business as GDS of Hickory. DeeDee?
All right. Again, good evening, mayor and council. I, I think we may have skipped number ten.
Well, I've already checked it off, we can't go back. I'm sorry, I penciled it. Well, it doesn't, well, I, I think, while we're thinking about eleven, let's go back to item ten. Bulk container service contract, Allied Services LLC, doing businesses, Allied Waste Services of Fort Mills, slash Republic Services of Charlotte.
Thank you, mayor and council. Uh, this item is, uh, this is actually a request to extend the existing contract. We've, uh, had a contract since two thousand and twelve with, um, Allied Waste Republic Services to collect our bulk containers throughout all of our city facilities. They have done a fantastic job. We have no complaints, and, uh, we would like to exercise the amendment in the existing contract to extend this particular, um, contract up until June of twenty nineteen.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second that.
Well, I mean, if you just any questions, here's a good time for it. I just, she gave a, she gave a glowing report there.
She did give a glowing report, and, and I accept that glowing report. I had one question. Um, since we are so happy with Republic, and then Republic does, which I know is our next item, the curbside, um, does that give us any, um, leverage in negotiations when, when they're-
For our residential?
I mean, I know all that's been done. I was just curious, it's just kind of a general question.
Well, I will tell you, the, the intention of staff was to try to get all these contracts running on the same time schedule, to make it, um, more convenient for staff, and more convenient for the city in tying these contracts together. Because, you know, when you get a company that can do both, um, of course, you know, you always do better with, especially speaking selfishly, staff has one contact, one company to deal with. It, it assists us in not being so diversified and having to contact several different people. And, um, so it, it did help. But the, the, one of the big things that really helped us this year with this contract was they did not, they had the option to increase our fees, um, our per-collection fee, uh, with a CPI increase. And, um, part of that negotiation was they with, uh, drew the CPI increase, um, due to us doing this extension. So it did keep our costs flat, uh, on the per-collection fee.
Well, and, and, uh, I will say that we, we, with all the Republic Services, we did bundle that negotiation.
Yes.
And there are some up and some down. And the bottom line is, is it a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, or a hundred and thirty thousand a year savings? Something like that?
In that ballpark, yeah.
That's basically what I was getting at. Because these are separate items, but I knew we were.
Is it six hundred and fifty, or no? No, what is the number?
Six seventy-six. Six hundred and seventy-six.
It is closer to one fifty. It's hu- hundred and fifty thousand.
I have one eighty-four, eighty, but eight hundred.
Right. When, when you put them both together, yes, sir.
There's, there's more to this story here that I think you need to explain.
All right.
Okay, because reading this explanation here, you're talking about some, um, billing errors, you're talking about reducing some collection sites. Can you go over that a little bit to explain exactly what happened? Because it looks like at the end of the day, we're coming out pretty good. But I want you to tout how good we're really coming out.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Um, if you can, if you don't mind, just switching over a couple pages. And there's an exhibit, it's, uh, exhibit A one. It's July twenty sixteen pricing schedule. It'll make it much easier for me to explain if you can go to that little chart.
That's in ten slash seven.
I can, I can explain why there was a billing error. Since two thousand and twelve, and, and we've had this contract, um, the contractor has billed us, they invoice us for work completed for the month. And when they billed us, for instance, you have the different size containers, and then across the top, when you see one X, two X, three X, that's the number of times per week that particular container is collected. What the contractor did was, they charged us forty-seven dollars and fifty-seven cent, whether they collected one time a week or six times a week. They never included the frequency with the billing. Um, they caught that particular error about almost nine months ago, and agreed to hold the price for us due to this being a budget year, and it being very difficult to increase costs mid-budget year, uh, that kinda cost. And they agreed to hold the cost steady for us up until these negotiations with the, with the single-stream recycling, um, in order to help us really with budgeting. But that is the billing error that took place. It was absolutely in our favor over the past four years. We have very few containers that are only collected one time a week. So we won, yeah, that was one for the city.
And also, part of that acknowledgement of understanding that is we have changed now, right?
Correct.
Uh, we don't, and, and we, it, it caused us then to be a little more efficient, and we've, uh, reduced the number of, of, right?
That's absolutely correct. So in turn, when you looked at the way, the number of, of containers we had, the number of times we had them collected, and you looked at what it was gonna cost us a year, we were looking in excess of seventy thousand dollars to, for that contract. And, um, we audited all of the bulk containers at the city's facilities. We had staff to go around all different days, different times of the day, before collection, after collection, look and see what was in the containers. And we came up with a list of containers that we could, um, expire, basically. And we could give them residential rollout carts, along with recycle carts. And we could service them on a once-a-week basis using our, um, city-owned trucks and, and our recycling contract. Uh, so we were able, with a lot of help from, um, the facility managers throughout the city, um, working with us to reduce the number of containers, which brings that cost down to a, a very manageable, um, cost. Uh, so it's somewhere around thirty, between thirty-three, thirty-four thousand dollars, as opposed to the seventy that it was gonna be.
So that's a, so that's a thirty-five percent decrease that you're talking about in here for projected cost for fiscal year two thousand and seventeen?
Uh, yes, sir.
Excellent, great job. And that's the innovation of, really, um, looking under every hidden trash bin, I guess, to find, um, um, better cost.
Question?
Yes.
What are some of those that you let expire? What particular businesses or condominiums or whatever?
Um, well, a ma- yeah, a majority of them were, were a lot of the fire stations.
Okay.
We did keep, uh, a couple fire stations that are, are larger and have meeting rooms. But a lot of the, um, uh, smaller fire stations, we give them carts.
So did, did that in the, in, in this case also sort of drive the awareness towards more recycling then? I mean, was that put out as part of this process to say, hey, look, you know, we need to reduce the waste stream that's being picked up that's not being recycled? We can recycle more. I mean, was that, was that part of the conversation?
Absolutely. It was always part of the conversation, and, and we've been real fortunate. Um, several of our fire stations already recycle and have recycle carts that, that is picked up by our, our contractor. And so this gives us an opportunity. We delivered recycle carts to every fire station, as well as the airport.
Good.
Um, and so they will be collected with the, our contractor.
Here we have, ju- just for you, in fact, we do have a representative from Republic here.
Yes.
As well, so happy to have her here this evening.
I'll, I'll make the motion to approve. Do we already make it?
We have a motion, I think, and second.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, but I think we haven't had a vote.
We haven't voted. My apologies.
But if there's no other questions, let's go.
All right.
All in favor of the, uh, item ten? Raise your hand. All opposed? You, yes?
Yeah.
Okay, that's unanimous. Now, I believe we somehow have memorized item eleven, so let's go ahead. You just start on the residential.
Yes, sir, be happy to. Uh, what's before you is the, um, contract for our residential curbside and single-stream recycling contract. It's a negotiated contract with our existing contractor. Uh, this particular, um, item, we, we are very pleased with the negotiations. We worked very hard, um, as well as the contractor worked right alongside of us to realize a, a cost savings in this area. Uh, so the cost has, will decrease, hopefully, from three dollars and eighteen cent, and that's per household per month, to two dollars and forty-five cent per household per month. Now, what you have in the memo is, is based upon a twenty-three thousand locations. I will tell you, currently, we serve twenty-two thousand, one hundred and fifty-six customers for garbage and recycling. We put twenty-three thousand in the memo to account for any fluctuation that we may see by the end of this fiscal year, because this is a proposal till the end of the fiscal year. So, um, that will fluctuate, and, and it will go up, uh, with the number of subdivisions that's been approved and all the building going on. So, um, right now, um, we are looking at a, a cost savings this year. Um, our administrative assistant with Solid Waste did an audit of our addresses and locations. And due to that audit, we were able to save thirty-two thousand dollars in this year's fiscal year budget. So that's, that's, that's a good cost savings. And then going forward, we're looking at, um, the FY seventeen proposed. We had eight hundred and eighty thousand in the budget as a, a place mark for this particular contract. The proposed contract, we're, we're looking at six hundred and seventy-six thousand, two hundred dollars per year. And that's a cost savings of two hundred and three, eight hundred. And we also put in the, um, budget for us to purchase recycle carts to the tune of ten thousand dollars. We did not take possession of the contractor's recycle carts. So we did not need that particular funding source to purchase new recycle carts. So that will also be a cost savings in FY seventeen, uh, which results in two hundred and thirteen thousand, eight hundred dollars in this particular line item, uh, for savings for our yearly, uh, service. This particular contract is a five-year contract. And, um, we, the, to me, the biggest part of this contract is we removed the customer service portion from the contractor and to the city. And then we also removed the cart service portion of the contract from the contractor to the city. What we as staff realized over time, when comparing the number of customers who called the contractor and the number of customers who called the city's customer service line, they were neck and neck. Forty would call them, forty would call us. When we compared the addresses, nine times out of ten, it was the same forty people. They were calling us, and we were giving them the phone number, or we were transferring them to the contractor. So because we were already answering these calls, we felt it would be better for us and, and better service to our customers for us just to take the calls and to handle the calls, whether it's a miss, whether it's a broken cart, or whatever the case may be. Our staff, Solid Waste staff, will now handle all the customer service. So it truly will be a one-stop shop for all Solid Waste services. Uh, the second portion of that is the cart services. That's if a cart needs to be delivered, if it needs to be repaired, if you need an extra cart, or, or anything else is a will, anything is wrong with your cart. You'll also call that customer service line, and a city of Gastonia representative will come to your house and repair the cart, replace the cart, or give you a new cart, based upon whatever your request is. And that, if you're a new resident and you're moving into a house, and there's not a garbage or recycling cart, you're gonna call us to come and deliver you a garbage cart. Well, we're already going to that location with a green cart, so the only added expense is us pulling the gray cart onto the truck and delivering it to the same location. That happens probably ten to fifteen times a day. So there's not really an added expense in regards to wear and tear and mileage, because we're already going there. So the only difference is we're taking two carts instead of one. We average about five to, five to seven calls per week to get carts repaired. And we would just fit those in, in the, in the order of a day with that particular truck that would be able to repair those. And with those portions taken out of the contract, so that our recycling con- recycling contractor is able to do what they do best, and that's collect and handle the materials of the recycling, of the recyclables, then we feel like we're, we're both better in, in servicing our citizens.
Yes.
One other question with regard to the contract itself. If you look at the scope of work, um, which is two point zero zero, um, in section B at the end of the page on exhibit eleven, three, it refers to that, um, that two percent, rise above two percent of additional cart requests. Could you just explain that for a second, how that mechanism works?
Yes. What the con- what the contractor has provided us is a, a two percent window. So if you're a customer who needs an extra recycle cart, we can give up to two percent of our locations. And currently, our location is, like I said, twenty-two thousand, one hundred and fifty-six. So two percent of that number, we can give an extra recycle cart to, and there's no additional charge by the contractor. There wouldn't be an, an additional charge by the contractor until we went above that number with extra carts only.
So does that, does that mean that the contract is currently fixed at twenty-two, one fifty-six? So what, what if, you know, what if the city grows above that two percent? I mean, up to two percent, the city can grow without an additional charge by the contractor?
Uh, no, sir.
Or only in case of second carts?
Only in the case of second carts.
Oh, okay.
Yes, sir.
Uh, uh, well, I just one clarification.
Did I hurt asked?
No.
DeeDee, this, um, the only increase, uh, on this recycling contract is due to the Consumer Price Index, and it's estimated every January, is that-
That's correct. We'll use January numbers to prepare for the next fiscal year's budget. So that, although we're gonna use the January release, the January numbers, it would become effective until July one.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make the motion to approve item number eleven. How's it presented?
Second.
Motion, second with Dr. Curling. Okay, any other questions or discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. It is unanimous. Thank you very much. Okay, DeeDee, your last one. Termination of Contract Twenty Twelve, Oh, Oh, Three Six. Supplier Agreement, Single Stream, Sunoco Recycling Incorporated, which is our exhibit twelve.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. This particular item is to terminate a contract that, uh, the City of Gastonia currently has with Sunoco Recycling Incorporated. Currently and, and since January of two thousand and twelve, uh, Sunoco Recycling has been the handler and, uh, of all of our recyclable materials. So even though Allied Waste Republic Services collects it from the curb, they take it to their, to Sunoco's location, um, in Gastonia, in East Gastonia, and they dump all the, all of the recyclables there, and then from there, Sunoco, um, transports it to their particular contractors for recycling. What we have requested is because through negotiations, the contractor has asked that they be the handler of the recyclable materials. And this has also allowed the contractor, yeah, Republic Services asked that they, uh, be the handler of all our, of, all of our recyclable materials. What this does for us is it allows everything to go through one location. It also assisted in our negotiations to keep the price down. Uh, the Republic Services has an existing, uh, MRF located in Conover, North Carolina, and a MRF is a, a recycling center that separates and handles all the recyclable materials. And they have to pay for that, their employees, uh, the cost doesn't go up or down, it just remains the same. So the more materials they send through there, the more be- the, the easier it is for them to handle the cost of paying for that particular facility. This, again, the contract is starting six months early, because the existing contract for recyclable collection, uh, doesn't expire until December of twenty sixteen. Again, and this is another area where we moved it forward six months to assist us in budgeting. It's hard to budget on a December, on a calendar year. So this particular agreement with Sunoco goes through December of twenty sixteen. In that particular agreement, there is a section that states if we terminate early, that we have to pay for damages. We have negotiated with Sunoco Recycling and they have agreed to allow the City of Gastonia to terminate this particular, uh, agreement for a sum of nineteen thousand dollars. Yeah, oh, exactly. They, yes, sir, they wanted twenty-five thousand originally, and they were, they settled for nineteen thousand. Yes, sir.
DeeDee, do we have to bring our recyclables up to Conover now?
The contractor, Republic Services, they're, they, we will be serviced out of Conover. So the trucks that come to Gastonia to pick up the, the recyclables will actually be out of Conover. So it will not be a inconvenience to them because they'll be going to that facility at the end, beginning and end of every day.
So back here on eleven, trying to get that eleven, one, um, with the recyclables with Republic Service, we saved two hundred and thirteen thousand, eight hundred dollars. We had savings of that.
Mm-hmm.
And now we're paying nineteen thousand. So in order for us to receive, you know, I, I subtract those two numbers and I get one thousand, uh, one hundred ninety-four thousand, eight hundred dollars savings by er- doing an early termination and going with, uh, the other company. Good job.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Yes, sir.
And again, from a logistics standpoint, now this, this, uh, takes some trucks off the road in a sense, because now, rather than, uh, having these recyclables deposited in East Gastonia and then Sunoco trucks coming into town and having to pick them up again, it takes more, you know, heavy trucks off our road and the general whole kind of a, how many trash trucks are on the road, uh, concept. So now the recyclables are being picked up and being whisked away
Whisked away.
To a foreign destination.
That's correct.
Okay. So I just want to get that clear and get that point out. But I want to say, um, this has been one of the most impressive things I've seen, I've seen recently in terms of budget negotiations, in terms of money saved, um, work well done. And I want to thank you in the back too, for being a cooperative negotiator on the other end. Absolutely, so, but I think y'all have done a wonderful job. I mean, this is awesome to think in this day and age, we can save those kind of dollars. And, um, and really, I think probably get a win-win for, you know, the city, again, um, you know, Allied Waste as well as for our citizens in terms of the customer service issues going forward. So hats off to all those involved.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mayor Ma- Mayor, I'll make the motion to approve item number twelve.
Second.
Second. Discussion. All in favor? Thank you very much, DeeDee.
Thank you.
Is that all you got?
Unless you've got something for me.
I'll, I'll read it.
Okay.
Okay, uh, next item is item thirteen, Citizen Committee Counsel Appointments, Presentation by the Mayor and Council. It's, uh, it's exhibit thirteen, just one page. And it says at the top that, that note that all appointments are not by wards, therefore, this of course be for twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen. Therefore, uh, none are, are indicated. Ward appointments are noted in bold, bold print, but I don't think there's any here. Terms expire six thirty of these that, that are here. The first one, uh, is, it looks like there's, there's one, two, three, uh, different boards. The first one is the, uh, is a three-year term that starts July one. It's, uh, for the, uh, Alcoholic Beverage Control Board, A B C. The, um, I believe that what we do is, uh, is we take them in alphabetical order. You, you walk me through this, Councilor. We, we've taken, we, we have two names here that are, are down for the, uh, and they are willing to serve another, of, of the term. Mr. John B. Howrin, Jr. and, and Mr. Wade White. We take, we ask for the other.
You, you open the floor for nominations. Any council member can make a nomination. A second is not required. Just open it up for that, and then when everybody's through making nominations, if you have more than two nominees, you will read the names alphabetically. Each council member will have two votes, because that's how many seats there are. Each council member must cast both votes, and you cannot cast it for the same person, all right? And this gets real tricky if someone doesn't vote like they're supposed to, because then we sometimes have to retroactively go back and figure out who it was and then do it again in the next meeting. So please don't do that. Please, please cast both your, both of your votes. And, uh, and, uh, there's no need to vote against anybody. Just call the names, raise, raise your hands. When we have two people who have more than four or more votes, then they have been appointed to the two seats in question.
But we open them up and then we put them in our order after.
At, yeah, you just open the floor for nominations, take the nominations. Then when, when you say, are there any more nominations, and there are not, then you start calling them alphabetically.
Okay, open the floor for nominations. All right. Any others? Yes, sir.
I'll nominate John Howrin.
Okay, yes, sir, Mr. Gallagher.
I nominate Brenda Craig.
Okay, any others? Okay, well, we have, we have three, um, names that have been, uh, presented, and we will vote for them, uh, we'll start with, i- i- if it's in alphabetical order, even I know that. Is, uh, Brenda Craig would be first. All in, vote. There is no second. You just vote.
Correct.
Okay. All in favor of, um, appointing Brenda Craig, three-year term on the A B C board? Raise your hand, please. Okay, it's, um, all, but Dr. Curling opposed. No, you don't oppose, don't do anything, just vote.
There's no negatives. There's no negatives. Those are six positive votes.
Six votes. Okay, uh, the next one's Mr. John Howrin. Okay, uh, all in favor of Mr. Howrin, raise your hand, please. Okay. All right. That's one vote. And then, um, Mr. Wade White. One, two, okay, that's unanimous. Okay.
Yes, sir.
That was seven votes, so it's six, yeah, did we deal with?
And everybody voted twice and we're good.
And white. So what we have there, of course, is the, uh, six votes, the seven votes. The six votes of Ms. Craig and seven of, uh, of Mr. White and, and one of, uh, Mr. Howard. Okay, Farmers Market Advisory Board, it says it's just a vacancy now. Is any, any name?
I'd like to put the, uh, Dr. William Gross's name in the nomination. Bill Gross.
Okay.
He goes by Bill, right?
Bill.
Bill Gross.
Bill.
Gross.
Gross.
G R.
G R O S S.
He served on the planning commission before. He's been involved with the county health department.
He lived over there, he, he works where you live, the health department.
Did. Like the same way. He's up for nomination.
Just make sure.
Okay, same thing. Okay, any other names? Or appointment? Do we have to vote?
Lot easier.
We still have to vote twice?
No, no, there's only one, there's only one seat.
One seat. All, all in favor of Dr. Bill Gross? Thank you. Nope, no opposition. It is unanimous. Seven votes. Residential Rental Property Review Board, uh, two-year term. You see who's listed, Martin McNeil, Margaret Darby Taylor, and Anthony Giacobi. Which somewhere didn't I have? No, that's a different board, okay. Said Lamar Keller. All right, uh, are there other, under the, uh, Residential Rental Property Review Board, are there other, uh? Well, that is his name on there. Residential Rental Property Review Board. Lamar Keller.
Is his term up?
Um.
Is it two-year term?
Uh, yeah. It, it says terms, and this came later off a different sheet. It says terms expire six thirty of sixteen. He is on there.
We, we'll, we'll check the record on that, yeah, 'cause.
You have to go ahead and, if we're gonna put him back on, go ahead and vote tonight.
We need to know exactly how many seats are available.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah.
Well, all of these are on there now.
They're on there now.
And so is Lamar.
Yeah, Lamar was his head first.
And we also have the other one that, which is my appointment.
Right.
Uh, what we could do is, this aren't, they expire till, what, July first? So we just do the next council meeting and get a clear, clarifying.
I stood at the next, because we got Tim Bowlin as the mayor, my, my mayor oral appointment, and, and it's just one. And Bill Sudick there is Housing Authority Board of Commissioners. That's, uh, that's a new one.
Is Lamar Keller the mayor's appointment or not?
No, it just says, no.
Nope, okay, yeah, we'll.
Residential is just, it says his name, right?
Yeah, your appointment's, uh, Mr. Bowlin.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, while we're on this topic, this, this program has been a, a resounding success, and I think even the, the rental property, uh, uh, owners agree that it's been a success, but it continues to be, uh, an item that is kind of under assault by the, um, apartment association lobby in Raleigh. They keep introducing bills. Sometimes they affect our program, sometimes they don't, but they continue to see these type of programs as a threat. And I, you know, if you talk to Mr. Keller, you know, he'll tell you, we were wrong, it's really helped the landlord business. So I just, you know, for those of you, when you see your local legislative delegation, you know, tell them to talk to the business owners who were affected by this program here before they vote for something rashly.
Okay.
It's, I think it's important to.
Yeah, we'll bring, we'll bring this back next council.
On, on a side note to what Ash was saying, I think it's important to note that a lot of cities that have instituted, uh, residential rental property type of ordinance, uh, charge a fee. And that's where the pushback is coming from. You have not only apartment associations, you have the Realtors Association. All are screaming to eliminate these programs, because they say you shouldn't have to pay a fee to own investment property. Which I'm not gonna sit here and argue that point yea or nay right now, but ours does not charge the fee. And the way the legislature looks at it is just throw them all out. They're not taking into consideration, there is a difference in these programs. And we really need to make them aware that, don't just say there can be no rental programs, period. Say there can be no rental programs that charge a fee and leave us alone. Because ours has been highly successful, there's no fee. No one's arguing to get rid of ours, but we could be, um, I don't know, what's the word?
Adversely impacted.
Yeah.
The baby thrown out with the bathwater.
Right, right, right. So if, if you do talk to your legislature, legislators or anything, make sure you, you make them aware of the, the distinction between ours and others. Just a side note, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, everyone, we'll be back for the, uh, as, as Mr. Mun said, in the next meeting. Uh, I, uh, item fourteen is Recreation Advisory Commission Report, Councilman, uh, David Curling, and that is our number, uh, exhibit fourteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the Recreation Advisory Commission, uh, met on Tuesday, May the tenth, uh, and, uh, we had some good discussion. Uh, there's no, uh, items for action tonight. Chuck and I are gonna tag team on this a little bit. Just the first one, uh, is a, uh, a discussion about cricket, and the gentleman, Mr. Amir Abasi, um, wanted to speak and is still preparing some of his remarks, so he didn't speak. So that's number one. I do the easy ones, I get Chuck to do the hard ones. Okay, so, um, the second item, I want Chuck to talk a little briefly about what's been going on at Martha Rivers, because he's our turf management expert, and I think he can handle it better than me, so.
Uh, thank you, Dr. Curling, uh, Mayor Proton Pierceall, members of council. We have had some issues with, um, uh, actual, uh, requests for our fields at Martha Rivers Park and our tournament complexes. Uh, some of you have probably fielded some of those from, uh, other organizations that utilize our facilities as well. Wanted to bring this up for several issues to our Recreation Advisory Commission. We do have a lot of members that have been on, or several members that have been on our commission for a, a lot of years and even back to our formative years when we were building, uh, Martha Rivers Park, but some of them are relatively new, and to, to kind of bring this to the forefront. Martha Rivers Park was built primarily for the youth of the City of Gastonia to utilize in our recreation programs. Uh, the second, uh, reason that Martha Rivers Park was, uh, built was to, uh, produce economic impact through tournaments that come to our city and, and, and play. The third was for school use, uh, through a reciprocal agreement, uh, in the event that they, uh, needed to utilize our fields, and we do use that. The fourth was for other organizations within the city to utilize those facilities for rent, for, uh, on a rental basis for their, for their program. So those are the priorities and, uh, it honestly has, has worked well. Our kids have played on, uh, on, um, premier fields. Councilman McAtterry was mayor at the time, I know Councilman Curling was, was involved as well, and a lot of you were involved and, and not in your seat, but, uh, a very wise decision to build the facility that we built at Martha Rivers Park. But just wanted to, to reiterate the purpose of the program and why that facility was built. We work with, uh, a lot of the groups in participation with baseball tournaments, softball tournaments, uh, have a, have a good working relationship, uh, with those. We have a great relationship with our soccer folks as well. The problems that, and I know some of you heard some of those problems, was that, uh, uh, soccer plays a little bit different schedule than baseball. You know, we have, um, more warm season areas, we, we don't play anything, uh, um, December, January, and February. Uh, we've had more and more requests to, to play and even practice at, at Martha Rivers Park. We have had tremendous use and tremendous impact on the number of uses that we have. What we've tried to work with the county to do and other cities within the county that have facilities is, it's hard to rotate fields, but to at least move things around where, uh, we're all not as negatively impacted by the usage. We've done that through our baseball tournaments and try, and also try to get the most positive use, especially with the weekend economic impact, um, uh, with the fields as well. Soccer, we, we, we have tried to work out some winter-type practices. Soccer, we, we, we have tried to work out some winter-type practices at Martha Rivers with, uh, uh, one of the soccer groups, and, uh, even, uh, this past year tried to work out some games, but as we have found out the hard way, it's very difficult, um, on warm-season turf grasses to play in the wintertime. Uh, January and February, and even early March, in a lot of cases, we get, uh, one weekend out of five or six that is even playable. So what we had proposed, and had discussed this with Recreation Advisory, uh, uh, group, was that we wanted to do our soccer fields just like our baseball, and let them rest during that winter, you know, the December, January, February, when it's, uh, I'm, I'm gonna say that it, it does more damage participating in those three months than the other nine months, uh, because of our warm-season grasses. Recreation Advisory, the commission also asked us to work with the county and other cities to, um, uh, come up with a rotation-type, type, uh, uh, deal, so we could, we could handle everybody that wanted, wanted field use. Uh, and that's what we have done and continue to, continue to do on, on those, so I think advisement, just wanted to, uh, get your input, uh, council's input after taking it to Recreation Advisory, uh, that's where we see what we need to do with, with, with our fields, uh, some of you may, you know, it could, the, the, it, it could come up, uh, because we, we do feel the need to, uh, you know, to do that with our fields.
The, the problem with that is, is you can't tear up the grass and expect it to regrow in the wintertime. And, and then what happens is it goes from, from grass to mud, and then from mud, you're, you're destroying that, you know, substrate of the field, right, Chuck? So you get to the point where, uh, then you don't really have any time to regenerate a good turf base by the time you start your spring season, right?
And what we've seen is that compaction, we can't recover from that, com- wintertime compaction versus summertime compaction is, I mean, you know, we, we, we get rain, we can aerate those warm-season grasses, we can do a whole lot more with it. You cannot recover from, from what happens in the winter, we, we found out the hard way.
So, thanks, Mayor Protim. Um, so Chuck, just to reiterate, um, the first priority is for local city recreation leagues to use Martha Rivers Field. The second priority is for county schools to use the fields, the third would be tournaments, because we wanna generate economic impact and development.
I had those in reverse when I was going off the top of my head, but yes, sir, that's correct.
No, 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 what I'm saying, um, and the last one would be, uh, private schools and local sports organizations like soccer clubs and that type of thing.
Yes, sir.
Um, but I played on these fields, uh, I coached on these fields, and by all means, they need a rest, um, in order to, for that grass to generate and allow the athletes out there to not get injuries, um, I'm all for giving the place, uh, three months respite, no doubt about it.
Uh, what we have done is we're looking at, uh, uh, Irwin Phillips, uh, uh, Bradley, some other alternatives for practice, and even, uh, potential games in those type months to, to give, uh, everybody wants to play at Martha Rivers, everybody wants to play at Ferguson, everybody wants to play at Poston Park, those are the three places within the county that, that folks wanna, wanna play, so, uh, you know, we are looking at some alter, alternatives, uh, and have offered those, and we're in, uh, great communication with, with that group, we, I'll tell you that Gast United has been an extension of our program, uh, for the almost thirty years that it has been in existence, and we've worked with them well to provide the fields, we, we succumb to a little pressure with, with the practice, we had never allowed any, any practice of any kind at Martha Rivers, trying to keep those fields as premier game fields. Now, we scheduled, it wasn't like we're just saving them for one or two games, we played, uh, the maximum amount of games you could participate on those fields, uh, it was just the practices in the, the wintertime that was causing some main problems.
Thank you.
Any other questions on that item two? Okay, um, item three, real quick, just for informational purposes, um, Smire Park Playground, uh, equipment has been received, and installation is in July, Icy Falls.
We, we moved that up to June, we actually got a, a date, that should be, uh, the twenty, the twenty-third is when both of those are scheduled, so we hope to have those in before the fourth of July.
So that, that's true for Icy Falls Park, um, Playground Edition Two, and then, uh, Irwin Sprayground, um, you know, we did receive a, a portion of the three hundred thousand through the city, or excuse me, through the county, the hundred and eighty thousand, um, so that's a, a project that won't be completed until early next, uh, summer. As far as the tennis courts, we've got tennis courts that have been, um, completely refurbished at Phillips and Ferguson and open now, walkway, uh, construction of both those facilities completed, um, and the volley wall is scheduled to be installed in the coming weeks, is that still true?
That is absolutely true, and I'm here to report, uh, that our newest RAC member is definitely gonna be, uh, uh, proud of the fact that, uh, uh, we have, uh, we, we partnered with an expert, uh, Lane Evans, who was a Hunter Hus graduate, who's a tennis professional up in Hendersonville, to get a volley wall, we actually had, as, as I kept telling, uh, Mr. Adams, that as soon as we got all the figures in, and if we had any funds left, that's, that was coming next, uh, so we did have funds left, and we bought, uh, um, volley walls that, uh, should be here, they should be here in the next three weeks, and installed directly, directly after that for, uh, for Ferguson and, uh, Phillips, so.
Great.
So that's for pickleball?
I am not a liar, I told, I kept, I, I was telling him the truth the whole time, but we had to wait till we had some funds available to, to get that.
Um, tell us what, what update you have on the downtown ballpark feasibility study, and if there's, if there's anything, I know it started May sixteenth, any, anything else on that at the moment?
Um, they, they have done, uh, uh, CSL has done, and Odell has, they have been here for a site, a site meeting, took a tour of, of the, um, area that we are, are looking at between here and the, the Loray Mill, they're in the fact-finding, uh, information gathering stage, which is, which is very, very early. Uh, I know they're gonna meet with, uh, Jesse and the Grizzlies, uh, uh, through a teleconference, if I'm not mistaken, but for, in some, some particular way, he was not able to make that first meeting. Probably in the, we're in the first fifteen to twenty days of, I think it's ninety days, I think, uh, when they have the first report, something like, I think, I think that's what it was.
Very good, thank you, the, uh, as you know, the new parking area down at Weinberger Park looks wonderful, and I've seen a lot of, uh, cars parked in there, um, Maples on Main is done, check that off. Okay, and then the, uh, the Little Mini Park down there at Second and Marietta, you can see the progress with that so far, and I think they're still in the process of determining, um, which artists will receive the contract to do the public artwork there.
We're gonna go ahead and landscape it, we've got the concrete work in, uh, we've got, uh, um, the groundwork for the irrigation and put the plantings in, uh, probably won't put the trees in till fall anyway, but I think we're gonna put the, uh, some of the plantings in, uh, now, and then establish that with the artwork as soon as they, they have, I think they've commissioned three folks to do some, uh, some mockups, I believe.
Little mockups, little mini pieces, yeah, yeah, so they're, they're in, in, in that process, so, I want you to tell us about item number four.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Uh, I'm gonna tell you, one of the proudest days I've ever had, uh, opening a new park with, uh, you know, with a lot of, a lot of folks around and hearing kids, uh, uh, laugh and have a good time is, is, is a very important part of our jobs. But I wanna tell you, on May twenty-fifth, uh, we had one of the best, one of the best turnouts, one of the best things, uh, to happen in, in my almost, uh, thirty-eight years of working with the city of Gastonia, almost forty-two years working in parks and recreation. Just as a casual note, we were talking, uh, y'all are, are all NFL fans, I know, uh, being as close to Charlotte as we are, all Panther fans la, from, you know, from, uh, uh, their successes, I know you've seen the commercials of NFL Play Sixty, which is, um, for each, uh, kid to strive to, uh, participate in some sort of physical activity for sixty minutes each day. NFL Play Sixty, uh, is, is, is a brand, it's a brand of NFL, brand of the, uh, NFL Network, um, they offered some grants, uh, that had a staff member just, I, just on the outside, so look, on the outside chance, uh, let's apply for this grant, we have, would have nothing invested in it, they only pick nine, uh, places throughout the country each year, and it's in an NFL, NFL city. Seventy-five hundred dollars is, is a grant, you also get, uh, uh, a couple thousand dollars worth of equipment, you also get some memorabilia and some things from, uh, from the organization. I will tell you that the Panthers do it, uh, first class, uh, a lot of NFL teams do not do it like the Panthers do it, they sent us, um, fifteen, all fifteen rookies came over. And they may have been made to come, but I'm gonna tell you, our hundred and twenty kids did not feel that way, they were the most welcoming, uh, 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 group for our kids, they sent two top cats, and these were, these were top cats for sure, but I'm gonna tell you, I'm gonna tell you, they're, every kid smiled, every kid had, I mean, they, they welcomed, uh, uh, all of ours, uh, we wrote the grant for our after-school program at Jeffers Center, we have about forty involved in that, uh, program, where, uh, Saddle Elementary buses them over to our center, we help, uh, we've got some volunteers that help them with, uh, uh, after-school, uh, with their, with their homework and things, we offer them a snack, and then we offer them activities, uh, that's how we got the grant, uh, was, was utilizing that program. Now, they wanted us to have over, you know, a, a hundred to a hundred and fifty, uh, there, so we invited some other community centers over, and, uh, uh, even, uh, had the Boys Club participate as well. They run them through, uh, it's, it's, it's a, it's a, uh, it's mock drills, just like you see at the NFL combines, the scouting combines, and they have eight stations, and, um, it, it's an hour, I mean, and they are, they're really going, uh, uh, we had a lot of our staff, uh, our Jeffers Center staff was great, uh, 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 Ted, Ted Ross and Tuana Austin were, they, they were very instrumental in getting things together, uh, Andy Starr was the guy who wrote the grant, and, and he, he, he ran with, he ran with just a whim of a suggestion. I wanna show you a, a, a picture, if I, if this, if I may, um, they wanted somebody to accept the check, and I felt like it was no better, uh, no better than the kids at Jeffers Center themselves, and that's about thirty of them right there, with all sixteen players, the two top cats, and the only person I cut out of the picture was Sir Perrin, I didn't figure that was, uh, that was too big a deal, but he, he was there too, uh, uh, NFL Films actually, uh, uh, have a clip of it, I'm gonna ma, I will email out, uh, that video clip from, from NFL Films, and I will tell you again, that was one of the, one of the best days, our staff worked well, the police department worked with us, so we had to keep it, it had to be on a download, if you will, uh, we could not, we could not, uh, publicize it, because if you publicize an event like this, you're gonna have five thousand people there, they want, they wanted to make it a special day for those, uh, a hundred kids, so, uh, we, we haven't got the real check yet, uh, they say it's coming, uh, I know it will be, but it was a proud day, they also sent us, and I wanna present this to the mayor, was a signed football by all the, uh, existing Carolina Panthers, and it can either go in the, the mayor's office or in a bookcase downstairs, and it is, it is authentic, I checked a lot of the, the city. Uh, we did get, we did get another, uh, NFL grant for Irwin Center, which was basically equipment only, it was about a thousand dollars to, uh, for our flag football program, so, those are, those are the two, uh, very positive things that we have going on, and we're gonna continue those efforts with that equipment to continue that NFL Play Sixty, not only that Jeffers, but at our other facilities as well.
Chuck, I wanna thank you and your staff for an excellent job on this, I think it was great for the community, great for all those kids, and, um, you know, I think, uh, of course, the funding for the program is awesome too, so, but, uh, that ends my report, any other questions for Mr. Delling?
Chuck, one question, um, for Smire and Icy Falls Park, what kind of playground equip, equipment? Swings?
I did not bring, no, I did not bring it with me, it's, it's, it's an apparatus, uh, uh, similar to, you know, the equipment we have at Optimus Park?
Yeah.
With, it's, it's more than that, this is about se, this is about a seventy-five thousand dollar playground, it is gonna be significant at both places.
Okay, 'cause I saw Icy Falls, and it's pretty sad. They got a swing and two, uh, pipes that kids can crawl through, and it's pretty, pretty sad.
Well, we've demoed most of that, swings are gonna stay, you gotta have sw, you cannot have a park without swings, so the swings are gonna stay, but these other, these other apparatus, uh, it is a, it is an active structure, playground. It's not just a piece here, a piece there, it's, uh, climbing, um, very, 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 very nice playgrounds, thank you.
Thank you, I look forward to seeing it.
That ends my report.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
More than I have.
Thank you, sir. Okay, um, it's gonna skip me like it did a long time ago, I said, item, uh, fifteen is the Transportation Committee Report, Mayor Protim Pierceall, Chairman, and, uh, that is, of course, item exhibit fifteen.
Fifteen one, yes, sir, Mayor. I, I apologize in advance, I don't have anything as exciting as an NFL signed football, but, um, I will tell you that we do have a new FBO contract for Fly Carolina Services. Um, and that is number item number one, uh, in the committee, staff presented the proposed agreement with Fly Carolina LLC, and as you all know, they are our current FBO, and that is the fixed base operator services at the Gastonia Municipal Airport. All rights of the proposed contract are shown below, and all other terms and conditions of the original contract will remain the same, and I will tell you that, uh, having experts, and I mean that as seriously as I can with, Councilman Humphries and Councilman McAtter on the Transportation Committee, both, uh, being well-versed in aviation, uh, this contract got a thorough review, and I think, uh, Mr. Peoples would agree with me on that. But, uh, in the end, uh, we do wanna thank staff for negotiating that, and I think at this time, the best possible outcome for us as it is now. I know Mr. Humphries has given some suggestions, as has Mr. McAtter, on things we could look forward to, uh, or things to look at going forward, but right now, you do see the details of that contract, and the committee did vote unanimously, three-zero, to recommend approval of this proposed contract, uh, Mr. Peoples is here, Assistant C-Manager Peoples is here, if you have questions about that contract, but I would, uh, present that information in the form of a motion and ask for full council approval for that FBO, um, agreement.
Approval, but, Frank, there was a motion by Councilman Pierceall.
Second?
In the second, by Councilman Deller, and the question by Dr. Curlin.
The contract period is two years? What, what is the sliding scale referred to where it says over the ten-year contract period? What does that mean?
Yes, sir, Councilman Curlin, that was the, uh, last ten-year agreement. That was a sliding scale, that was established at the beginning of that ten-year term.
Okay, that, that's the, that's the current contract, I'm sorry, okay, and that was a ten-year contract period, okay.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Very nice, thank you.
We didn't wanna quite go that long this time.
Right, good show.
Michael, um, I see we increased the, the fuel flowage fees from five cents a gallon up to eight, so we increased it by three cents a gallon. Um, how much do we, how much revenue do we get from that per year?
That one increased by about eighteen hundred dollars, that's what we're looking at, increasing that amount.
Just eighteen?
For those three cent, yes, sir.
We didn't do it as good as solid waste.
No. Um, it, it, the contract increased itself, right?
Yes, it, it did.
You guys gotta take some lessons from solid waste.
But, that's why it's only two years, we, we think there's some, some improvements that could.
Yeah, I, I'm looking at the shark guy there, at the tank.
And a lot of the ideas are coming from him, yes.
Uh, thanks again, Michael, for, uh, the negotiating, uh, that was, that was a lot of work. You, you noticed it is for two years? A lot of folks are gonna do a lot of work in that two years, uh, on our side, to, uh, look at a lot of different things. Uh, I, I did wanna, uh, make sure the council, uh, saw the, the remarks, uh, all the remarks that were made concerning that, uh, the new contract, and, uh, uh, like, uh, Mayor Protim said, I think at, at this time, it's, it's the best for the city, uh, if we, if we do not do this, it's gonna cost almost three times as much for us to step in, even for a year. I, I have a lot of concerns with a, a lot of different things in here, however, that being said, uh, again, I, I don't see anybody here from Fly Carolina. They weren't at the committee meeting either, so that bothers me in itself, um, I just wanted to get that on the record. Thank you.
David, what is our goal with the airport? Is it to break even, to make a profit?
Ideally, an, an FBO, an FBO operator, his goal is to break even. If he can do better than that, then that's gravy, no matter what services he offers. An FBO by itself that only runs the building and pumps gas, never will break even. Unless one person does it. That's the only way it would come close to breaking even. Because there's so, there's so many moving parts to, to, just, just an FBO, not, not even considering a maintenance uh facility or an avionics uh installation facility, any, any, any of the extras, charter, uh, any of that stuff is all above and beyond. A, a, a basic FBO operator is the, the person you see when you walk in the building after getting out of your airplane. The guy that pumps the gas in your airplane. The person behind the counter in there that helps you out, that is an FBO.
So, wha- what you're saying is, we're gonna see more improvements over two to three, four years down the road from where we are right now?
Well, I've, I've, I've had a lot of conversations with Michael and Porter, spending bought in, in quite a few of them. What, what our, our goal is gonna be over the next couple of years is to get our, now, this is provided, I mean, we, I, I assume we all want the airport to succeed. We don't, we don't wanna close the airport. To keep the airport, there's certain things that are gonna have to be, be done at this level, at the FBO level. And I don't wanna get into a whole lot of the, the details right now, uh, with this, but just suffice it to say, it'll, it'll be totally different than what you see right now.
So, this is a beginning?
This, this is to get us to the totally different phase.
This is before takeoff?
And it, and it, and it do the best it can do with minimal support from the city. We're gonna, we're gonna turn it back into a business. Somebody's gonna run a business at the airport and pay us to run a business. They're gonna be a tenant, so. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
The Councilman, McAtier and Councilman Humphries are on it. They are on it.
We're on something, all right.
And we're lucky to have them. I mean, we're, we really are lucky to have them, to have so much knowledge in aviation between the two of them, it's, it's great, so. Anyway, um, we're at a motion and a, a second.
Any other questions? All in favor of the motion?
Thank you, Michael. Um, just uh to make everything very brief from here on out, you'll see items two, three. And then um it goes to item six. Everything else is information. I don't know if anybody has any specific questions they might have. It's all presented right there, um, things like the uh spot rankings, I do wanna highlight that that, uh, the comment period for that was, is May thirtieth through June thirteenth. I came by City Hall and um was the only one that came by that day, so not many people are interested. But if you guys are and want detailed information, please stop by. I know Bjorn was in there the day I went by, able to answer any questions you have. Item number three is just have an update on the river district development that's happening in Mecklenburg County. Obviously, that'll be right there, uh, where we're proposing to have two rivers crossing. So, there's some discussions there about how we can partner with Mecklenburg County and also possibly the developer to get them what they want on their side of the river and then get what we want to get us over the river. So, just some preliminary discussions there. I O MPO will be talking to the MPO, I know Gastonia Planning Staff is doing that. Item six was the Govon Project update on the roads. And Rusty's here, should you have any specific questions on, on that? And then, of course, we have the Cox Franklin Traffic Study. But all, there again, not the most exciting information in the world, but very necessary information. And uh, if you have any specific questions, like I said, Rusty's here, or we'll try to answer them. Yes, sir?
Just a, a real quick comment. I drive Tittman Road every day to work and, and it's nice to see the progress. And I know it's slow-going and, and people have concerns, but when it's finished, it's going to be a, you know, a, a really, really nice road, so. Good to see the progress.
Definitely, definitely.
Yes.
The Franklin Boulevard conversion, where's that gonna go from and from? It's going from six lanes to five lanes?
Correct.
Is it the whole Franklin Boulevard?
Right out here, that, that goes through, well, it's already five lanes in some places.
Right.
Where it has a turn meeting. And then that will continue through, is it to, goes all the way down to uh? Acre Center, yeah, yeah.
So, it's gonna be a turn, it'll be a turning lane?
Well, there'll be some turn lanes, there'll be some medians, it's, it's.
Yeah, and it goes, goes west, uh, all the way to uh Bestur City Road.
Bestur City Road.
So, we're not thinking that that's gonna cause more traffic going from three lanes to two?
Makes it a little more efficient. Actually, you know that, that the uh amount of traffic on, on Franklin's dropped significant uh over the years. And uh, the, the state wants to do the, the five lanes. Five lanes will set us up for medians and begin to soften it. Also, there's improvements to pedestrian crossings. We have, and, and the city's gonna supplement some of those pedestrian crossings, like for instance, Oakland here. We have pedestrian crossing at Oakland and, and there are many places that they're just really substandard. And so, that's some of the other work. They're doing the paving now anyway. And so, if we ever wanted to move to, from six to five lanes, this is the time to do it. Then, then the work to get back into planted medians are more complicated and, and costly. But you, we've got, if you go to any other big city and you go downtown, you, you're able to walk back and forth across the main street. Our main street's Franklin and that six-lane Boulevard is tough. And, and we've got to soften it, that's what everybody says, all the developers, we, we've already, this, this council said it many times, uh, and, and, so this is a first step.
And it is on the uh, the dime of the state.
Yes, uh, we're, we're doing a little bit in terms of some of the pedestrian access. Now, the, the dime that will, which would be on the city's, uh, the, the others, uh, but they're, they're actually picking up most of the pedestrian. We're picking up a little bit, we're making the crosswalks a little more prominent. It's not the red brick crosswalks, but it's more prominent. We're also, uh, if we, when we get to planted medians, that's gonna be on our, our dime.
Thank you.
Is that gonna be in different phases, Ed, the, the medians?
Yeah, I've asked the staff to come back with about three or four that we can get in that are easy. Some, some are difficult and some are easier, just to come back and let's get some cost estimates. Rusty's preparing those things, so we'll be able to evaluate it this year.
Thank you.
Okay.
If there's no other questions, then that will conclude my report. And just one note to our city manager, who's in Salisbury today, on our wayfinding signs that we talked about, the wayfinding signs?
Yes, yes.
Take a look at what Salisbury has.
Okay.
Very, very nice. And not so fancy that it looks like they're just over-the-top expenses, but very nice visual all over their downtown.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
One comment.
Yeah.
I was, I was going out to Gaston College today, to the Gastonia Technology Park. There were no signs anywhere saying Gastonia Technology Park. So, if somebody comes off Interstate going, uh, going north on three-twenty-one, they wouldn't know, maybe to turn on Greerbead Boulevard. So, I wonder if the state would consider, if, we need some IDs coming both ways for the Gastonia Technology Park, my opinion.
I shot over again, I knew better, and let's get off and get Greerbead.
Did you go straight by it one time?
Twice.
Oh, good gracious.
Not today, I did.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But, but I thought it was marked and uh, so I had, I went up and, I went up and actually made a U-turn over and went back towards there. And there, there it was, at, at the top of the hill of uh Greerbead on that, on College Side.
Right.
It says Tech Park.
Yeah, but we need something that says Gastonia Technology Park, big green sign. Thank you.
Uh, city attorney's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Wanted to remind everyone that I'm gonna be um out of the office through uh June twelfth through the twenty-seventh on a trip with my family. And I know that sounds like a really long time, but it's with my.
Who authorized that?
His, his wife.
My wife. You wanna, you wanna take it up with her?
Any, any questions? Any more questions?
But um, actually, Dad was in a car accident Sunday. He drove through an intersection and he's uh blind in his right eye and he thought he had the right of way and he did not. And he was very, very lucky, so we are all gonna go spend uh two weeks together and I think the timing is uh, is really apropos. On another note, I wanted to let you know that um our bill to revise our charter has not been introduced. And it, as you recall, it's a very routine housecleaning thing. You actually agreed to give up several sections of the code that, of the charter that you weren't using, that some citizens complained about as being onerous. I spoke with Representative Boem Gardner this week. He said they've been busy with uh coal ash and the budget. But he thinks that he's gonna get it done this session. He said he has not talked to everybody on the local delegation yet. He would need unanimous support to get a local bill done this short session, especially at this, this juncture. And then, right before we got off the phone, he said that if he doesn't get it done this session, it, then at least he'll have it ready to go first thing in January. So, um, just wanted to report on that to you. And Publix is opening July sixth, that's my report.
Sixth.
The sixth.
Sixth.
July sixth.
Yeah.
Okay, so, city manager's report.
Couple of things to see is Phil Wel- Phil's not here, okay. The uh, because of the death of that fireman, uh, he's a Newton fireman. And uh, they have asked us to back them up for the funeral. They're all, all their, their fire folks are gonna be at the funeral. So, uh, what cities do from time to time, uh, Pine Bowl was covered by somebody else. This time Newton had, has asked us, so we're gonna send a truck and, and we're gonna go up and back them up, so they all can go to that here, just to let you know.
Yeah, and Pine Bowl's doing that too.
Yeah. Then I'm, I'm going to Town Hall Day tomorrow, uh, to talk to our folks in the legislature and get the legislative briefings. Just some exciting uh ribbon cuttings, whether it was the YMCA, the uh Pleasant Ridge Elementary School. And uh, today, that, that exciting opening at uh Owens Corning. So, uh, it's good to see all that economic development. That's my report, thank you.
All right, sir. City council report, start with you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just a couple of small things here. I was, I'm sure everybody's heard about the layoffs at Freightliner this past week. Hopefully, it's not another sign of things to come. Most of the time when they do that, uh, it's not long, their production picks back up and they call the employees back, so it's kind of a roller coaster. I do want to thank uh the citizens that have contacted us. Uh, I know Jim's had some contact with some folks, I have. That's why we're here, you know, it, it's to, to help people out that need to help and answer questions and uh, they put us here, so. It, it really makes me feel good when I get a phone call or an email, whether it's a compliment or not, you know? I mean, we, we don't want just the good stuff, we need the bad stuff too. Hopefully, there's more good than bad. Uh, and finally, uh, to remind everybody, remember our military personnel and our first responders and their families. And also, our two injured linemen and the Pierceall family and their prayers in the upcoming days and weeks. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
No, of course, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, just a couple of notes. One, I wanna say thanks to Chief Hilton and the Police Department for the unity in the community basketball tournament. I was able to stop by for a couple of those games. It was good to see all those officers and also uh members of the community having some good fun, some good sportsmanship. And I think uh it was a great day, had by all. Um, and then also, it was a pleasure, I know Councilman Kellogg and the mayor were there. We had uh US Congressmen, county commissioners, everything else for the uh new groundbreaking for the new school. And it was held over at um.
Pleasant Ridge.
Thank you, Pleasant Ridge. I, I had Ryan Elementary in my mind, 'cause that's what it's replacing, but it was held at Pleasant Ridge. And um, that's gonna be a beautiful, beautiful school, I think it's uh twenty million dollars. So, uh, quite the statement and I, I liked what Superintendent Booker said, that this is proof that we are investing in our school kids. And the fact that this is in West Gastonia and is gonna be state-of-the-art school proves that we invest in all of the kids in Gastonia, regardless of where they're from. So, I thought that was a powerful statement. Also, uh, you should've gotten a copy of an uh memo that I sent out earlier, kind of uh giving you a warning that I would be making a motion tonight. And the motion is pretty broad, but what it is, is to review our central business UDO ordinance, um, specifically looking to revise it. A reputable business owner in Charlotte approached me. He's a resident of Gastonia, but he is prohibited from opening his business here in Gastonia because of our uh ordinance is too strict. Now, our downtown ordinance or our central business district ordinances are strict for a reason. We don't want to allow just anything, we have what we consider our reputation or, I guess reputation's the best word, what we think it should look like. This business owner is agreeable to that. He uh has an upscale shop and so uh I'm working with Attorney Smith to uh come up with some verbiage to present to the Planning Commission, 'cause that's what's gonna need to take place first. It will have to go to a hearing of the Planning Commission and then they'll make the recommendation to us. But I am making the motion to uh go ahead and ask the Planning Commission to review that on behalf of the county.
I'll second that, if that's a, a motion you're making, I'll second that.
Thank you, Robert.
Okay, there's a motion to second. Any, any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Thank you, and that concludes my report.
All right, Mr. Gallagher.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Went to um the least of these, it's an organization, I'm on the Board of Directors, and they help out kids that are foster children. And this is the first year they use camp rotary for um a camp. They took all the foster children from Gaston County, um, from eight to about thirteen, fifteen, eighteen, sixteen years old, not eighteen, no. But about fourteen, fifteen-year-olds. Um, and they brought them out to the camp for the whole weekend of Memorial Day. And it was a, a lot of the kids never went away to camp. They'd never experienced camp, they didn't realize what it was all about. And it was, they had ninety-one children sign up and it was just excellent. The kids went swimming, they have uh the rotary, uh, they even had water slides going into the lake. They had an area sealed off for just three feet of water for the kids to splash around. And it, all of them had life jackets on. The one shortage that they did have were life, life jackets. And these kids real, they never even knew what a, you know, a bonfire was. I mean, smores and all that, I mean, just, it was, and these kids, a lot of kids have gone from home to home to home. And you, you get to see joy in them saying, man, this is the first time I really had some really good fun. So, it was just really, it was, it was a great weekend for, for those kids. And I, I appreciate everybody out there that, that donates that organization. Let me see what else I have going on here. Councilman Humphries said it upstairs and I have to say it here, the Armory had all their trees cut down. Are we planning on putting up um some spare leftover maple trees from Main Street there? Because it, I don't know if you've been back there, but it looks pretty bad. I mean, it, you know, you go down Clay Street and it's like, what happened to all the big trees?
Yeah, I think, I think Chuck will address that, they were Bradford pears and they're being replaced and so.
Who, who wanted, who had the Bradford pears put in, say, you don't?
My name's Curlin, not Bradford.
I know, that's not your favorite tree, by any means.
It's a, it's a, uh, Armory, old Armory in the uh Yorkchester neighborhood.
Yeah, that's it.
And how did they get permission to cut these trees with so many people in, in their neighborhood?
Is it in the historic history?
Where the city.
Good point, Porter, good point.
And it's not right, 'cause there are people in our neighborhood that have had trees that, that, that feel like they're unsafe. And uh, and uh, uh, they can't get permission.
Is it in the historic history?
Yes, it is, all the way to front of them. Yes, it is, all the way to Franklin Avenue.
I, I couldn't tell you whether it's in the historic district or not, but we had, uh, a, a couple of issues here. One was, um, uh, there was pine trees that were adjacent to the Little Theater property that had really, um, one, they were, they were at their, their life expectancy there, but they were causing a lot of roof damage to the Little Theater. They were, and they were in the process of replacing their roof. Uh, so, we helped, uh, uh, take those pine trees down. And we are gonna be in the process, once they finish, uh, their new roof is to, uh, plant some more trees that will, uh, accent buffer their property from, from our property, uh, there. Uh, we had some damage in two of those Bradford pears that's on Clay Street around, um, uh, the Armory. And we are looking, we, we, we took all of those Bradford pears. They were at close to their life expectancy. And Bradford pears in the seventies, you could not plant enough of them, but today, nobody plants them, nobody wants them. It's, we, we are in the process of replanting all of those, uh, down, um, uh, Clay Street. And I'm not a hundred percent sure if it's maples, whether we had any of those yet, but I, I do know it, it will be a, a vibrant street tree going back, going back in there.
We, uh. Stump grind all the stumps?
Yes, sir. We, we're, we're, we're taking the trees down, grinding the stumps. That's, that's the only way you're gonna get another tree to be sustainable back in, uh, in those spots. But, uh, they, I, I hope it don't offend anybody, but Bradford pears are not tr- they're not trees. I mean, they're, 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 they're invasive species, uh, that, that.
Extract.
Anytime we can extract those and put something else there now.
The stump, uh, that dead.
Yeah, yes, sir. They, they will be taken out and they will be, uh, uh, we will grind those down and put something else back in there.
And just one more item. Um, I know I said I'd like to see some maple trees down by the, um, bus station, 'cause they took out all the, um, river bark, river birch, birchwood trees. But I know, I noticed that they put up some cameras and I, I don't know if that's preventing us to put up trees to, um, or anything. Oh, sorry, Chuck.
Chuck, you might as well just stay up here as long as he's on his report.
Thank you.
Um, um, I'm not sure about the cameras, but I do know that we've, we have looked at that area to see, we're, we're gonna plant some trees in there. When, when they were originally planted, we had a, a lot of those birch trees were, were, were there. And it just was not conducive to that area. So, we actually have a lot of holes there and a lot of that, um, uh, it was pavers that was put in. We've had a lot of upheaval there. So, we are, we are looking to kind of redo that, reconfigure that. And probably, there'll probably be two or three trees in there instead of the nine or ten or might even been eleven when it was originally, originally put in there. But we do have, uh, some improvements earmarked to do that. That's, one's gonna look good, not impede the cameras and, um, uh, hopefully not be tripping hazards as well.
So, it's gonna take some time, but we're gonna get there.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. That is my report, Mr. Mayor.
And Doug Curly?
Uh, yes, I attended the SHIELD Museum Board Meeting last Thursday. Uh, museum's doing, doing well. Si Dome is open now and, uh, getting good activity there. Um, they also, you know, again, expressed, uh, their continuing challenges for lack of grassroots funding, you know, because over the years, the state has continued to, uh, lessen the amount of funding through the grassroots, uh, science, uh, program funds. So, they're doing their best to try and make up for that through other sources. Um, and then the other thing is, is that they're in the process of preparing for their move out of the Hall of Science and Man because of the structural problems. So, that's a major undertaking where they're having to basically move everything out to start that process. So, um, otherwise, the SHIELD's doing well. And of course, um, I attended the Y M C A groundbreaking, uh, with some of you. And, um, just really excited about the opportunities there, because that's gonna be a wonderful facility for, uh, the city overall. And I think it's gonna be, again, one of those pieces, as Andy Warlick said, you know, they went up and down the whole coast. Um, and looked at all the Y's in the eastern and maybe a little bit in the Midwest. And, um, they really wanted something that was gonna be really the bu- the best of. Not, not just something the good as, but something better than anything else. And I think you're gonna see this in this, in this project. Uh, and, uh, when I was in Rotary on Monday, uh, Patrick McHenry was there. And, and, and he, um, uh, he made some interesting comments about, um, you know, the city of Gastonia and Gaston County in general. And how we were always used to say, um, well, that's pretty good for Gaston County. You know, it was everything, you know, and it was, you know, he always, you know, we would always kind of couch the phrase, you know, comparing, well, for Gaston County. But he said, you know what? We're, we're starting to do things in this community, in this county, that's pretty good for the whole country. I mean, you know, comparing ourselves more than just locally, but more regionally and nationally. And so, uh, I see that and we're getting there and I'm excited. And I think things are gonna get better as time goes on, so. And that ends my report.
Thank you.
It's really exciting to see so many ground breakings and ribbon cuttings and, and just progress i- in this city. Um, I, I know over the last two weeks, I've literally had to pick and choose the events I wanted to go to because there were so many of them. And that's a, you know, that's a real blessing for the city. Um, I, I think it shows, um, foresight. I think it shows determination. And it shows that, you know, that we really have a vision and we're moving forward. Um, I, I really enjoy going to the Y, um, with the ribbon cutting there. It was really inspiring to see the kids there and how excited they were. And, and, uh, the school that you were talking about, um, Pleasant Ridge, um, another great project. And, and today as well, going to, uh, Owen's Corning and just seeing the, uh, the great facility they have there. And those people are really, really proud of what they have there. And I think the sense I got was that they were really proud to be in, in Gastonia. And they're, and I think they're going to be a, a great addition to the, uh, to the city. Um, so I think we're on the right, the right track and there's a lot of good things happening out there. Um, I, I think most of you got an email I sent, um, talking about next year being the one hundred and fortieth anniversary of the city of Gastonia. And I, I know I'm thinking about it, um, it's not the greatest date, you know, one hundred or one fifty. But I think we need to celebrate. I think we have some things that have happened in the past couple of years that, that we need to just take some time out and celebrate who we are as a city, the accomplishments we've made, the vision that we have, where we're going. We're seeing our downtown starting to, to develop. We're seeing people starting to come out of a economic recession. And we've been a little bit slower than some areas to come out of that. I think it's time to celebrate the good things that are happening here. And, um, I, I think in, in my vision and what I'd like to propose next, uh, city council meeting is that we actually have a committee to help Rachel. Um, I don't wanna see it as just one event that we do, but I think it could be a year-long, um, a year-long process of different events and different things that we, we do as a city to showcase who we are and, and the pride that we have in our city. So, that is something that I will, uh, work on trying to, uh, present at our next meeting. But that's all I have. And I wanna thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm really, um, this afternoon, I was struck at how thankful and how, uh, how blessed we are to have you as a mayor. Everywhere you go, and, and I, I'm a people watcher, so I watch people, but everywhere that you go that I happen to be at, I see how you interact with people. I see how you, um, you tell stories and you're so, um, just a genuine person. And that comes through and you're a great ambassador for the city. And, and I'm not trying to schmooze you, but I just wanna say thank you.
You keep talking.
I seriously appreciate the way you, uh, the way you conduct yourself and represent the city.
Thank you very much. I, I, I want to be remembered when I go on to my reward. And I, it happened today. Robert, you were there, but I did get the, the mayor of the city of Gastonia did a high-five with Pete Pat.
Yes, yes.
Pete Pat.
Pete Pat.
Well, put that on the, up on the wall there.
Cause I don't face it.
Uh, well, well, thank you for those kind words. I, in closing, I, I'm just, you know, I, I have, as Porter has, and Dave has. We, we've been here forever. Uh, I mean, from birth. And, uh, it, I've not always seen this growth. Ned and I go way, way back. This is when I grew this thing, by the way, with, yeah, that, that, that centennial, whatever. But, um, the, um, uh, going to the Pleasant Ridge, I was, I almost ran off the road at the, um, Pleasant, going to Pleasant Ridge School in the pouring rain is seeing, uh, and, and the, the name escapes me, um, John's Church, the church on Carolina Avenue. It is a whopper. It is so big. It's a addition.
Tabernacle.
Tabernacle, yeah. And they, so therefore they're, it's sort of like Unity up here. It, it, their church won't be the church. Their church will be an addition, because they're building it, but it is, and Liper, the former city councilman in Charlotte, uh, is the, uh, built contractor. And the, uh, last thing I'll say is the, interesting enough, the mayor of Shelby is the, is an architect. Know that, but he is doing Pleasant Ridge. He was there yesterday. The school.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Yeah, I need to say that. Okay, well, thank you very much. And, um, y'all don't forget what, what, uh, Councilman said over here now.
Good or bad, you'll be remembered. Good or bad, as his name says, you may not always agree with him, but you'll know where he stands.
Thank you very much. Let's go on.